The Wednesday, June 14th, 2023 a.m. session of the Portland City Council. Kealan, good morning. Please call the roll.
Good morning. Ryan.
Here.
Gonzalez.
Here.
Maps.
Here.
Rubio.
Here.
Wheeler.
Here.
And now we'll have your legal counsel and the rules of order and decorum.
Welcome to the Portland City Council. To testify before counsel in person or virtually, you must sign up in advance on the council agenda at www-portland.gov/council/agenda. Information on engaging with city council can be found on the council clerk's page. The presiding officer preserves order and decorum during city council meetings. The presiding officer determines the length of testimony. Individuals generally have three minutes to testify unless otherwise stated. A timer will indicate when your time is done. Disruptive conduct such as shouting, refusing to conclude your testimony when your time is up, or interrupting others' testimony or counsel deliberations will not be allowed. If you cause a disruption, a warning will be given. Further disruption will result in ejection from the meeting. Anyone who fails to leave once ejected will be subject to arrest for trespass. Additionally, counsel may take a short recess and reconvene virtually. Your testimony today should address the matter being considered. When testifying, state your name for the record. Your address is not necessary. Disclose if you are a lobbyist, and if you are representing an organization, please identify it. For testifiers joining virtually, please unmute yourself once the council clerk calls your name. Thank you.
Thanks. First up is communications. Folks are here, or at least four of the five are here for one item. Commissioner Ryan had asked for the opportunity to give an update prior to that on this subject. Commissioner Ryan?
Yes. Thank you, Mayor. I've heard from community members and stakeholders that the adjacent neighbors are making security improvements to the area around McCormick Pier. That said, I've directed the parks property team to work with you to extend the temporary non-park use permit through January 31st, 2024. That should provide ample time for your neighbors and the city to work together to figure out the long term. That said, we still want to hear from you.
Very good. First up, thanks, Commissioner. 480, first individual, please.
Request of Kat Ulrich to address counsel regarding pedestrian easement.
Great. Can we come up together?
Absolutely. Yeah. Why don't you read? Did you want all four read together? I believe there's...
Reed is coming virtually, and Alex is not here, so...
Okay. Why don't you go ahead and just read the first four, and we'll let you guys decide what order you want to go in, if that's okay. Perfect. Have a seat. Welcome.
Thank you. 481, request of John Hollister to address counsel regarding pedestrian easement. Item 482, request of Alex Stone to address counsel regarding pedestrian easement. 483, request of Reed Kerr to address counsel regarding pedestrian easement.
Great. Welcome. Good morning.
Welcome. I'll go first. So, good morning, Mr. Mayor, honor counsel members. Well, you've wrecked my speech.
Never mind.
So, thank you very much for your consideration. So, again, I'm here on behalf of McCormick Pier, Condo Association and Security Committee, Echelon Protective Service, and the Northwest Community Conservancy regarding the closure of the east-west pedestrian easement gate that runs across our property. We have had a lot of, we've made a lot of headway on our security. We're putting in the automation for our north driveway gate. We're putting in the security cameras. We've increased the height of fences. We have a proposal for the south driveway gate, which should be completed this year. So, we've made a lot of progress. I know you've been really busy, and we're grateful for everything that you've done. So, reducing the public traffic has been beneficial to the security and safety of our residents. And I did just want to include that the last time when I asked you to revoke the pedestrian easement, I realized that was maybe a little aggressive, could be construed as hostile, and I just wanted to apologize for that. We're just asking for a permanent closure for that gate. Coming here every three to six months is, for the same thing over and over, it seems there must be a resolution to it. So, what we would like is just to enjoy a safe and secure life in our very middle-class community along the river nestled between the Tony Pearl and the Funk Zone in Old Town. So, I'm asking on behalf of our 500-plus residents and consideration of the people who work to provide us security to have the Parks and Rec authorize the permanent closure of the center gate across the said easement. The center easement that runs east to west, not the Willamette Greenway. Okay. That's it for me.
Great. Thank you. Hi, John.
Hi. My name is John Hollister, and I am a resident of the Pearl District. And the, all of you are faced with so many amazingly complex issues that there are no simple answers. And if we go back to a simpler time, 1982, when McCormick Pier was first made on the greenway there, incredible, what an incredible establishment apartments that were there, right on their beautiful greenway and arrangements with the city to, for parks to be able to go and monitor that and help it keep it clean. And then in 2005, it got shifted to condos, and everything was just wonderful. And then things started to get a little more challenging, and right around the Steel Bridge area, and things began to accumulate, and then we get closer and closer, and our homeless and our drug addiction issues continue to mount. I think the greenway is a very, very important part of the whole messaging for what we want to have in Portland, and I think the north and south gates need to have access at all times or during the day between the...
Six to eight.
Six to eight. Yeah, 6:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. I think that's very, very important. This middle gate, when it was done with the concept of the bridge coming over and being able, people to go right in, that became a thoroughfare for people that were in distress and an additional way for them to be able to conflict with some of the ownership. The fact that it's a 400-yard type thing and for people to have access from the north and the south is, I think during the day, is something that definitely needs to take place. But that particular gate, which was closed a while back for some construction, and all of the residents noticed that was, there was a great relief in the, in some of the troubles that they're having. And then, when it was opened again, those problems increased again. And Commissioner Rubio, you heard that, and you were the first commissioner to say, hey, you guys got a point. Let's do this and see what it is from a temporary basis. And then thank you, Commissioner Ryan, for extending that. And it's extended now yet another time, and thank you for giving enough time for us to be able to come with a permanent resolution. They're spending tons of money from a security standpoint to be able to make this, help with this problem and help the city. So, of all the complex problems that you're facing, locking a gate? Boy, oh, boy, wouldn't it be nice if that was the biggest problem and that locking a gate would solve homelessness and hunger worldwide? So, thank you for your consideration.
Thanks, John. And was there, there was one more person online, I believe?
We actually have Alex Reed, or Alex and Reed online.
Ah, very good. Welcome.
Hi there. My name's Reed Kerr, and I guess I can go first, if that's okay.
Yeah, welcome.
So, I completely agree with both of them, what both of them are saying. I think on a personal note, I just come as a representation of some of the residents who, again, I think the idea is to find some sort of middle ground and to feel safe where they're living. And an easy way to both allow the freedom for people to freely move in and out of the property, but also allow some of the ownership and people who are living in this community to feel safe is to close the middle gate section so that there's an area where their cars are and where a lot of foot traffic is, where people allow their animals to use the restroom, and do life together is an area where they know that is private and is a place for them to feel safe. And so, I just come as a second to what's been said already, and I do appreciate what's been done already and how your group has helped the community out so far, and looking forward to a final resolution. So, thank you very much.
Thank you.
It looks like Alex actually left the meeting.
Alex has left the meeting? All right. Great. And thank you, Commissioner Ryan, and it sounds like there's good communication and collaboration with your folks and the neighbors, and I appreciate hearing that. Thank you for coming in and bringing this to our attention, and it sounds like it's getting resolved, and I'm very glad to hear that.
Great.
That's good news.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thanks for making the effort to be here. And then we have one more individual, I believe, for communications. Kealan, item number 484.
Request of Crystal Major to address counsel regarding community safety and signage. And Crystal's online.
Hello. Can you guys hear me?
Yep. Loud and clear. You sound great.
So, I wanted to make awareness of the fentanyl issue that we have here in Portland, Oregon. I'm sure we're all aware of that, but the signage that needs to be posted, the difficulties and accessing the Narcan for a lot of these individuals has become a big concern of mine along with a lot of others. COVID-19 was the leading cause of deaths in the U.S. in 2020, which was 375,000. Second leading causes of death was fentanyl, 69,000 deaths. Then third was gun violence, ending with 43,000 deaths. I believe that the signage would bring more awareness and provide a clear and easily accessible information for them to use, how to use Narcan, how to, where to get it, what training needs to be done, and if they can see a visual of the sign of someone giving Narcan to an individual, then a lot of us would understand how to help these people. Fentanyl is an extremely potent lethal, even a small dosage can, it can cause an overdose or cause other issues like, you know, your lips turning blue, your nails turning blue, pinpoint pupils. But my main focus is exposure. I was exposed to fentanyl and methamphetamines without even knowing that I was exposed until I had went to the hospital to give birth. I was a month early, and I was having blurred vision, dizziness. Prior to this happening, I had been out helping the homeless encampments with moving their materials to a different location and providing meals. And I was exposed between, oh, I believe it was two hours. So, two hours, within two hours, I was exposed to a lethal dosage, which caused me to go in labor a month early, and I failed a drug test at the hospital. But I was exposed to these chemicals, these poisons, and nobody, nobody even knows if they're being exposed to it because it's being done on the streets in the middle of the day in our grocery store.
Crystal, if I could just comment. First of all, thanks for being here, and thank you for sharing your story, and I'm very sorry that happened to you, and I'm glad that by all appearances, you're doing well. Obviously, terrifying experience and a close brush, and I can't imagine what that was like for you. Your idea is actually a sound one. There is Narcan rapidly being deployed through the community through a variety of means, and I think you're probably right that given...
It needs to be addressed. I know that the CDC and the, I've talked to the OHA, and they have the forms that show the signage that they, in 2017, they created the signage for training, but none of it's being posted anywhere. I don't see anywhere where it's posted, where you can get Narcan, or where, what to do if there's an overdose. There's no signage nowhere, and if we have that...
Yeah, and that's, you know, I meet with the county chair regularly, and this is something I can raise with our public health agencies. From my perspective, it seems like a sound idea, and I appreciate it. Commissioner Ryan, I think you have your hand up as well. Oh, I'm sorry, Commissioner Maps, go ahead.
Sure. Crystal, I just wanted to thank you for testifying today. I agree with the mayor. I think that this community needs more public education around fentanyl, both the risk of fentanyl and what to do should you get exposed. I did want to encourage you, and I will frankly, one of the things I think this council, our conversation I think this council needs to have is the urgency of around the city of Portland developing a fentanyl strategy. I think that includes public education, especially in the health side. I think the public education piece might be more in the county's lane or the state's lane than our lane. So, one of the things I wanted to do today is thank you for testifying and also encourage you to show up and give testimony with our colleagues over at Multnomah County. I believe they meet on Thursdays at 9:30, and you can probably zoom in. I think those folks are in a really good position to follow up right away around the call for better public education and health education around fentanyl. And I will make this pledge to you that I will talk to my colleagues and talk to the mayor about trying to develop a more robust fentanyl strategy here in Portland. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and Commissioner Ryan.
Commissioner Ryan?
Sure. Thank you for being here, Crystal, and thank you for your service to the homeless community. I really appreciate it. I agree with what's been said. This is personal for me because my spouse did take MAX, but it was almost once or twice a week where they had to get out of the MAX train because of secondhand smoke. Now they're taking Triment buses because there tends to be less secondhand smoke, of course, on the bus. So, in addition to going to the county, I would hope that you would consider amplifying your voice at Triment meetings as well.
Yeah. We really don't know what we're being exposed to because I was exposed, and I didn't even know if I wouldn't have went into labor and they wouldn't have taken the sample at the hospital, I would have never known that I was exposed because I'm not a sub user, so...
No, like...
It sucks for us that are exposed and we don't even know it. We don't know, you know, what areas to not be in anymore, so we can't really use our common sense because it's everywhere. So, it just, it needs to be made aware of. There needs to be some sort of signage, some training, some classes offered, a flyer, a brochure, something more than what we have now.
Absolutely. Thanks for being here, and thanks for amplifying this truth.
Thank you. Commissioner Gonzalez?
Crystal, thanks for testifying. Horrifying story. I hope everything's okay with your family after the early pregnancy. I, just to be clear to those listening at home, if you witness an overdose, please call 911. That's unambiguous. That's always the first step. Unfortunately, that's happening way too much in our society right now. While I share the general tone of my colleagues up here, I also think we need to address this with strident response to the drug trade in our community and make it less, much less hospitable for dealers and for those who use, that there is no simple public health solution to this. With the volume of fentanyl in our community right now, I think we absolutely need a strident law enforcement solution to at least a part of this problem. And we can't do it alone. We're going to need our state and federal partners to help stem the flow into our community. But again, thanks for your testimony, and if someone witnesses overdose, please call 911.
Thanks a lot, Commissioner. Very good. That completes communications. We'll quickly take care of the consent agenda. Any items been pulled from the consent agenda?
We've had one item pulled, 490.
490. Please call the roll on the remainder of the consent agenda.
Ryan?
Aye.
Gonzalez?
Aye.
Maps?
Aye.
Rubio?
Aye.
Wheeler?
Aye. Consent agenda is adopted. Through the first-time certain item, please, number 485.
Proclaim June 2023 to be the 40th anniversary of the 40 Mile Loop.
Our next item is a proclamation honoring the 40th anniversary of the 40 Mile Loop. I'll now pass this to Commissioner Ryan, who will introduce today's presenters. Commissioner Ryan?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm pleased to recognize the 40th anniversary of the 40 Mile Loop, which was put together in 1983. I've had the pleasure of meeting with this persistent and focused group of volunteers that are now at the table, and I'm here to present about it are the representatives from that esteemed group, the 40 Mile Loop Board. Is that the name of the board? All right. Laura, Lou, Reynoldson, Jim, Sulan, and Walter and Lynn. Lynn and Tucker? Yeah. All right. Well, welcome. It's good to see you. Take it away. It's all yours.
All right. My name is Lou Reynoldson. I am the president of the 40 Mile Loop Land Trust Board, and we are here to share our presentation, which is, there it is, coming up on the sides. All right. The 40 Mile Loop is an all-volunteer, nonprofit organization formed around the rebirth and the new iteration of an inspired idea. That idea is to connect parks, neighborhoods, institutions, and activity centers with a safe, multi-use trail system that serves everyone throughout urbanized Multnomah County. This has been our organization's mission for 40 years. The 40 Mile Loop is not someone's whimsical idea. The value of the interconnected park system is first articulated by the Olmstead Landscape Architecture Firm 120 years ago, is currently validated by multiple statewide recreational surveys documenting consistently high demand for walking, bicycling, and wildlife viewing opportunities, and by the demand for those opportunities to be close to home, and by the need for free recreational activities supporting public health for people of all ages and abilities, and by the added value of a fully complete system of trails and multi-use paths as an important transportation asset linking homes, jobs, parks, natural areas, and the commercial centers. I will now pass it to Walter.
Hi. So, after incorporating as a land trust, because initially we thought we might be part of owning this property, though we don't own any of the property now, it's all owned by other jurisdictions. We commissioned this master plan. Here's when they did those in paper, and that was 40 years ago. Since that time, the trail has evolved into a series of, we've been working with the seven jurisdictions that are in the area, city of Portland, Gresham, Fairview, Troutdale, Multnomah County, Port of Portland, and Metro, because we're looking for the opportunities to complete this trail. Over time, this trail has evolved into a braid of trails that's over 150 miles long, so 40 Mile Loop is a name for a much larger system. And now we're going to show you where we are on the completing of this trail.
Okay. If we could have the next slide, please? So, you're looking at the 40 Mile Loop, and the next slide will show you what it's really comprised of. It's an assemblage of trails that you probably know by their trail names, maybe not knowing that they're actually part of the 40 Mile Loop. So, all of those trails actually make up the 40 Mile Loop. Next slide. And our sibling, Green Loop, sometimes gets in the way of our identity, so we love the Green Loop, but the 40 Mile Loop is different than the Green Loop. You can see the Green Loop is probably, I don't know, six miles long, and we're up, we have a much larger, longer reach and touch on all these communities as part of urbanized Multnomah County. Next slide. So, as Walter said... So as Walter said, the 40 Mile Loop is actually 150 miles long. Next slide. And our, the map that we're showing is color-coded to communicate which portions of the loop are completed, what are gaps, what are actually pedestrian-only trails, such as the Wildwood Trail and the Markham Trail on the west side, and what gaps are funded. And we have good news coming up there. So the next slide, please. So including the gaps that are now funded, the 40 Mile Loop will be, soon will be 73.5% to be precise, complete. I'm going to pass it back to Walter.
So 2002 was one of our most successful funding years. This is how the 40 Mile Loop is created. We're the advocacy group, but we work with all the other jurisdictions and developers to look for opportunities to build this trail. If it wasn't for hard work from the City of Portland Parks, PBOT, particularly Brett Horner, Maya Arguel, Zeph Wagner, plus other people from Metro, looking for opportunities to use the bonds that we approve as voters, or the money that comes from Wash, or ODOT, or the feds, that's, all those are pulled together through incredible staff work. And we're the advocates and the cheerleaders for this to happen, but it wouldn't be happening without the support of Parks and PBOT to make it happen. We'd like to thank them actually, and thank Metro for, and Portland for how much advocacy there was for the Metro Trails Program to grant funding for a lot of the trails that we call the 40 Mile Loop. Next slide. So this shows you the trails that were just funded in 2022. There were over $20 million worth of trails that we were funding. We were very lucky. They're gonna, that's the reason why we're going to get to 73% funded. And again, thank you. That's a great 40th anniversary opportunity and celebration. We'd like to, over the next couple of years, as these trails are done, we're going to have ribbon cuttings and things like that. So we're going to invite you to come and be part of the festivities as each of these segments open up. What's nice about the gaps that we're filling now is the ones that we're filling now are creating very, very, very long segments because you work in one segment, and then you have a gap that you can't do for either, for different reasons. But now we're filling in the gaps, so now we're making very, very long extensions so that the vision of the trail as continuous is coming alive. Back to Jim.
You actually have another slide that shows where the gaps are being closed. I think we go to the next slide. This is a slide showing where all the funded projects are in the 40 Mile Loop. And the ones with the white bubbles are, were funded by the last round of funding with, through Metro. Metro bond measure money and also some federal dollars that Metro distributes. And then sort of the yellowish bubbles are from private developments that are paying for pieces of the 40 Mile Loop. So the University of Portland, for example, lower campus is building a section of the Greenway, North Portland Greenway Trail, and the, what we call the Alamo Manhattan Project on the Southwest Greenway will complete a link next to the spaghetti factory that will close up. So it's, these things are happening. The other, the other bubbles are from other public funds that were, I think the trail in East County that I call the Fairview Gap is federal money, but it's, it's actually going to happen next year finally. So let's move on to the next slide. So here are our challenges and opportunities. This is our to-do list. We have a lot of work remaining. On the public safety issue next to trails, I want to commend council for the hard work that you're doing to address the problem. Congratulations on improving relationships with the Multnomah County and working closely with them. I'd also like to call out that the Peninsula Crossing Trail is being restored as we speak, and in fact, it will be open later this week, we believe. And so that's all good news. So I think we're turning a corner on this issue, and thank you for doing it with compassion as well. The next item is the North Portland Greenway. This is our post, our most ambitious project. Oh, if you could go back a slide, I'm sorry. The North Portland Greenway aims to connect the East Bank Esplanade to Kelly Point Park. That's our most ambitious project that we're working on right now. We'll continue working hard on that with Portland Parks and with PDOT. Walter and others are following the Marine Drive Interstate Bridge intersection quite closely to make sure that the Marine Drive Trail will have a smooth connection when, during the, during the planning process that's happening now. There's also a levy raise going on in that area as well. We have a lot of work to do on the Columbia Slough Trail. Too many to mention right now. We'd like to have a new funding strategy now that we're past the 2022 funding round. We need to figure out where the next dollar is coming from so that we can complete this 40 Mile Loop. And we have a lot of intersections with the railroads, and so we probably will need your help there as well. Enough said on that. Thank you. Lou?
All right. Next slide, please. Okay, so before we hand it off to Mayor Wheeler and go to the proclamation, we'd like to let you know why 150-mile-long trail and path system is called the 40 Mile Loop. Here, let's see. Here's the first slide of two slides that will help tell the story in the beginning of the 40 Mile Loop as the idea and the name. In late 1903, John Charles Olmstead presented the first comprehensive plan to the park system for Portland to Mayor George Henry Williams and the four-member Portland Parks Board. Notably, the plan called for a system of parks and, parks of, parks connected by parkways and boulevards as interpreted by Emanuel Misch and CP Kaiser in the plan on the right. Misch and then Kaiser worked diligently to implement the plan until Kaiser retired in 1949, after 30 years of being a park superintendent. Next slide, please. Thank you. The Olmstead Plan was rediscovered in 19, in the 1970s during discussions about developing close-to-home recreational opportunities. Parks administrators and advocates worked to develop the idea, which became our project today. When someone, perhaps out of the idle curiosity, ran a measuring instrument called an opimeter, that's what's pictured over to the left, around the map of the Kaiser's Boulevard and Parkway system, it turned out to be 40 miles. The name 40 Mile Loop became attached to the project, even though everyone at the time knew the system would be much bigger than 40 miles that were logged. And Jim?
So we'd like to finish before handing off to Mayor. Just advance a slide, please. Next slide. There we are, back to the 40 Mile Loop, and then the next slide will show you that we're out now part of a regional trail system. So Portland Parks has been collaborating with Metro for years to develop a regional trail system. And so in a way, the 40 Mile Loop kind of got this started for the region. So that's what our regional trail system looks like, and we'll be over at Metro Council next week to thank them as well. Next slide shows an even more ambitious view. So here we have how the regional trail system is connected to trails that extend to the Columbia River Gorge, that go down the Willamette Greenway. And maybe most interesting to the mayor is the trail headed out west to the coast. It goes through the town of Wheeler. That is called the Salmonberry Trail. It's an 86-mile-long trail project, and it would be fantastic. I hope we're all around when that finally is open to the public. That's our presentation. Thank you for giving us the time.
Thank you. We appreciate it, and a great way to end the presentation. I'll turn this over to my colleagues for their comments before I read the proclamation. First up is Commissioner Maps.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I want to thank our panel for, okay. Sorry, I was wondering if I had feedback. I think that's just noise from outside. I want to thank the panel for today's presentation and colleagues. I would like to say this. I am delighted to join you in proclaiming May 2023 to be the 40th anniversary of Portland's 40 Mile Loop. As we have learned today, the 40 Mile Loop is a partially completed greenway trail that snakes its way around the Portland metro area. And as we also learned today, the 40 Mile Loop name is obsolete because today the 40 Mile Loop is more than 150 miles long. And in addition, as we're kind of correcting the historical record, although we are celebrating the 40th anniversary of the 40 Mile Loop, the Loop's history stretches back 120 years. The Loop was first proposed in 1903 by the very esteemed Olmstead Brothers Architectural Firm as part of the Forest Park Development. And as, as often happens, especially in this building, for about 80 years, the plans for this Loop largely sat on a shelf. All of that changed in the 1980s when the 40 Mile Loop Land Trust was formed. Formed, I believe you guys were incorporated in 1981 with the purpose of acquiring lands and conservation and recreational investments along the 40 Mile Loop corridor. I am incredibly impressed by the Land Trust's ability to pull together local jurisdictions, including the City of Portland, Metro, the county, the state, the port, the Army Corps of Engineers, state, federal, and fish and game, the drainage districts, the cities of Gresham and Troutdale. Colleagues, that is, like herding an army of cats. I'm very impressed in your ability to navigate this space. But through your diplomacy, you've been able to get these agencies to come together to create the 40 Mile Loop through landbaking, conservation, donations, and public and private fundraising. And of course, now here we are, 40 years later, after the founding of the Trust, the planned 40 Mile Loop trails have grown to more than 150 miles, including all of Multnomah County and more than 30 parks. Now, as we heard today, the Loop is 70% complete. And I'll tell you, it is my hope that in my lifetime, the final 30% of this project can be completed. I want to pledge to our good friends over at the Trust that I will work with you to get this done. I do hope that actually we can sit down with members of my staff in the next weeks or months to talk about aspects of this project, especially around the Interstate Bridge project. I think there's some interesting opportunities there. I will also say, I also would love to talk to you a little bit about drainage districts and some of the opportunities that are in that space, which kind of come to me through my work with VES. And with that, colleagues, I just, let me just say, thank you again to the Land Trust and our panelists for being here today. And I will hand the floor back to my colleague, I guess, Commissioner Gonzalez.
Thank you, Commissioner Gonzalez.
Well, when I saw this on the council agenda, I immediately thought of all the sunny summer days. My family's enjoyed biking, walking, and running on portions of the 40 Mile Loop. The 40 Mile Loop represents the very best of Portland. We were early adopters of the rail-to-trail movement, converting discarded railroad corridors into safe, enjoyable, non-motorized corridors for Portlanders of all abilities. Whether you're on a fancy road, bike, or in a wheelchair, the 40 Mile Loop is for you. This is the livability we all love about Portland. This is the livability we have continuously voted for and invested in. But as much as we cherish our livability represented in the 40 Mile Loop, we've also taken it for granted. Parts of the 40 Mile Loop at times have become dangerously unsafe in recent years. That's true for our children, that's true for our seniors. There are parts of the Loop that I simply don't want my children on in certain parts of the day. We just assumed it would care for itself. When Commissioner Rubio served recently as our Parks Commissioner, she recognized the need to reinvest in the corridor's safety. Now, under Commissioner Ryan's able leadership, we are continuing to reclaim the safety and sanctity of the Loop and reclaiming our city's livability. Today, I'm pleased to recognize the 40th anniversary of the 40 Mile Loop. It represents the vision, the recent challenges, and most importantly, the resilience of a great city. I look forward to seeing all Portlanders back on the Loop. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Gonzalez. Commissioner Ryan?
Thank you, Mayor. I have to say, I'm quite taken with your noble work. It was one of my favorite meetings since I've had this assignment. So thank you, Laura. Thank you, Walter. Thank you, Jim. This kind of vision takes dedication, perseverance, and in this case, decades of patience. And thank you also for engaging other local governments. We don't hear that too often. As Commissioner Map said, it is like herding cats. I herded Metro, I herded Gresham, I herded Troutdale. And yes, the big one, the railroads. Well, I'll need to be all in for that. And we, and I have to say, speaking of railroads, I'm really grateful that children and families will be able to have access to Peninsula Crossing again. One of the reasons to cite a safe rest village there was multiple purposes beyond providing compassionate care for those that need transition from chronic homelessness to stability. It was also because that amenity has not been used by children and families in that area for, what I've heard, for five to six years. So the fact that we have an opportunity soon to reopen that, and I think it's real soon, this weekend, we look forward to having that be a part of the 40 Mile Loop once again. Anyway, I admire your diligence in moving this trail ever closer to completion, and I too hope to see this completed, the 26.5% that remains. I look forward to seeing this open in my lifetime. Thank you.
Thanks, Commissioner Ryan. Commissioner Rubio?
Thank you, and thanks to Mayor Wheeler and Commissioner Ryan for bringing this proclamation forward, and thanks to our presenters for the very informative presentation today. It's really amazing to learn how the 40 Mile Loop is actually more than 150 miles of trails and path, and to see how over time, I really like the graphic where you show how different partners have contributed to the building of the Loop. And it reminds me like of a family quilt where everybody sort of does their part, but this one belongs to Portland. So these foot trails and multiple pathways allow us the ability to get around in a very sustainable way, experience the outdoors. And I agree with my colleagues that we need to appreciate this gem that we have and take good care of it and ultimately get it done, finish that Loop. So I just want to say thanks to each of you and to all the volunteers that you work with for doing and taking care of this on behalf of all of us. And again, thanks for bringing this to our attention again and reminding us of the gem that we have in our backyard, and congratulations on 40 years.
Thank you. Great. Thank you, colleagues. I will now read the proclamation on behalf of the city. Whereas at the request of the 40 Mile Loop Land Trust, the 40 Mile Loop Master Plan was developed by David Evans and Associates 40 years ago and was published in May 1983. And whereas, the 40 Mile Loop Master Plan called for the development of a system of trails and pathways through Multnomah County connecting parks, natural areas, commercial and employment centers, and neighborhoods. And whereas, the rebirth of the idea for an interconnected system of trails and pathways has served the citizens well by providing convenient and safe places for people to walk and bicycle separated from traffic. And whereas, even though the master plan calls for over 140 miles of trails and pathways, the name 40 Mile Loop is derived from and honors a vision of interconnected parks articulated 80 years earlier by renowned landscape architect John Charles Olmstead and is subsequently interpreted by Portland Parks Superintendent Charles Paul Kaiser. And whereas, the 40 Mile Loop has inspired an expanded vision of a regional system of trails and pathways connecting all cities in the Portland-Vancouver metropolitan area and beyond. And whereas, the 40 Mile Loop acknowledges and thanks local governments and nonprofit partners, including the City of Portland and Portland Parks and Recreation, for their willingness to adopt trail and path alignments called for by the 40 Mile Loop Master Plan, for their commitment to design, fund, and construct segments of the 40 Mile Loop, and for their ongoing commitment to maintain its incredibly valuable public asset for all use and for everyone to enjoy. And whereas, at this 40th anniversary of the 40 Mile Loop Master Plan, we call upon all of our local government partners to recommit to the completion of the 40 Mile Loop, which stands today at 70% completed. Now therefore, I Ted Wheeler, Mayor of the City of Portland, Oregon, the City of Roses, do hereby proclaim June of 2023 to be the 40th anniversary of the 40 Mile Loop in Portland and recognize that the 40 Mile Loop and the regional trail system are integral parts of a safe, healthy, and sustainable urban ecosystem for all community members and visitors to enjoy. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you all. Well done. Thank you. Appreciate it. Thank you. Appreciate it. Colleagues, we'll move on to another proclamation, 486, please.
Proclaim June 19th, 2023 to be Juneteenth.
Colleagues, our next item is a proclamation honoring next Monday, June 19th, as Juneteenth. To present, we have with us this morning, the leadership team from the City African-American Network, or CAN. We have Taisha Matul Riley, Mental Health Program Specialist, Ira Bailey, Housing Program Coordinator, Marvin Dean, Housing Construction Coordinator, and Jarell Hosley, Supervisor of Summer Free For All. Welcome, thanks for being here.
Good morning.
Thank you.
Well, I am, I'm Taisha, and I will start off with words of expression this morning. Good morning and welcome to Mayor, Commissioners, and all other city staff and affiliates. Thank you all for joining us as we acknowledge and celebrate Juneteenth. As we gather and unify on this day, let us also pay homage to our ancestors and their suffering that has paved the way for us as a free people. When we think about freedom, we typically think about physical freedom and our ability to move and maneuver freely. When I ponder on freedom, I am forced to consider what life must have been like and reminded of visual depictions of slavery and imprisonment through movies, photos, anecdotes, and other sources. The reality of that experience and its ripple effects is difficult to fathom and process, leaving one left with the images of violence, abuse, manipulation, and pain, often trying to make sense of the senseless dehumanization of my people for the personal gain of white people. On December 6, 1865, the Thirteenth Amendment of the Constitution of the United States was ratified, thus ending slavery and nonconditional servitude in the United States. But how many of us know that this was just the beginning or a step in the right direction, as we would say? I can visualize the literal shackles being taken off of the bodies of our ancestors who were forced into bondage, bondage of the mind, body, heart, emotions, the family, resulting in generational trauma, brokenness, identity crises, and worth deprivation. Today, I want us to think deeper about the true essence of freedom and what it means for people who are considered, who were considered property and less than human, to be free to think, to feel, to express themselves, to succeed, to fail, to lead, and to prevail. Today, to have power to be able to pick and choose what you want to do, when you want to do it, how you want to do it, identify with whom you want to do it, and justify why you want to do it. While freedom has given black people autonomy and power, it has also equipped us to recognize the perpetual society, societal realities of systemic racism, oppression, suppression, prejudice, and discrimination. And we refuse to succumb to the societal imprisonment presented to us. Instead, we consciously, intentionally, and courageously exercise our right to be free. We, as a people, are refusing to be bound, and we are standing our ground. Today, I want us to look around the room and recognize who we are sitting next to and to ask ourselves, do I create a space with fear of bars and shackles? Or do I create a space free of restriction, limitations, and suppression? As you reflect on who you are and how you show up as a human being, it is important for you to be clear about how you impact the world around you. Today, we stand in solidarity, celebrating the many achievements, successes, and contributions of African-Americans, past and present, and continue on this journey to continue dismantling racism on all levels and embracing the joys of freedom, black brilliance, beauty, and excellence. As I stated in a previous statement this week, let us find ourselves bonding through fellowshipping, encouraging and supporting one another, enlightening our palates with tantalizing flavors of black culture and soul food, supporting black-owned and operated businesses and movements, listening to black voices to find hope and faith, gathering wisdom and understanding from the stories and reflections of black people, dancing to the beat of the song that sings freedom and rejoicing, and yielding to the power of the black diaspora across, across cultures. Today, we celebrate Juneteenth. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning, Commissioners. My name's Ira Bailey, Housing Program Coordinator at the Housing Bureau. And first, I want to say thank you, and I would like to say good morning to you, Mayor, Commissioners, community members in attendance, and fellow civil servants. We are here today as members of the City African-American Network to speak in honor of Juneteenth. As you all may know, Juneteenth finds its origin back when on June 19th, 1865, Union soldiers arrived in Galveston, Texas, and announced to the people of Texas that the slaves in that state were free. This was two months after the end of the Civil War and two years after the Emancipation Proclamation. You may also be aware that the Emancipation Proclamation only ended slavery in Confederate states that were actively fighting against the Union. All openly identified slavery was not abolished until December 6, 1865, with the ratification of the Thirteenth Amendment. When we look at the timeline, we can see that the Emancipation Proclamation was more of a strategic attack on the resources of the Confederacy than the end of slavery, as it is more commonly known as. And Juneteenth isn't a celebration of the end of all slavery, but it is a celebration of freedom from the invisible chains that bind our hearts, spirits, and minds to the past and to trauma that without recognition will guiltlessly imprison our future. Now admittedly, on the surface, Juneteenth may seem like a black holiday for black people whose ancestors were slaves here in the U.S. Because of this perspective, there are folks who are opposed to this holiday and feel that the celebrating of it needlessly ties us to the past, prohibiting growth and unity as a nation. I would argue that the lessons that can be learned from this holiday are as pertinent today as they were 158 years ago. Two easy examples: Juneteenth became a federal holiday in 2021, 40 years after the first state declared it should be celebrated. The city of Portland declared that Juneteenth would be an observed holiday in 2020 during a time of civil unrest, and 48 years after annual celebrations within the city had already been going on. The state of Oregon would follow one year later. Other examples include, as, as our colleague in the city's mental health specialist Taisha can attest to, adults who avoid human connection and relationships due to strong chains of trauma binding them to the labors of self-protection they had to perform for the harsh slave master or masters of physical or mental abuse and/or abandonment. They need to be made aware of their freedoms. Or what about the person who tries to function in a lifestyle that is harming themselves, others, or both, because it's what they believe either they are supposed to do, or they have no choice but to follow their inclinations and proclivities because it's what their parents instructed them to do, or their community or culture guided them into, the results of which we are seeing in increasing numbers here on our very streets? Things like alcoholism, drug addiction, perpetrators or victims of physical violence are known by mental health specialists to pass on from one generation to the next just as easily as hair and eye color. These people need to know, as tough as it may seem to change, they are free to do so. And as I stated earlier, there was more to the Emancipation Proclamation than just ending slavery. It was a move to help prevent the social and economic unraveling of a nation wrapped in a package of benevolence. In the same way, the city speaks of its core values and then at times misses the mark at holding to them. That doesn't mean no good can result. It simply means that the city leaders may need to be reminded at times that they are elected as leaders and not, are not bound to make decisions the same way their predecessors did, nor in ways which make core values seem more suggestive than binding. Perhaps if those in the news media and with influential platforms could see or recognize their chains to corporate profits or manipulative political agendas, not saying that all politicians are manipulative, they could walk in the freedom of honest, objective journalism and once again gain the trust of society. At least, it seems like a nice thought, yes? You know, in the proclamation, we say that we invite everyone to join us in the celebration of Juneteenth because we believe that in all of our own stories, we can relate to the original meaning of Juneteenth. We, as a city, are free to grow and don't have to be bound to the chains of destruction and corruption resulting from greed, selfishness, fear, hopelessness, disregard, disrespect, entitlement, and apathy. We proclaim freedom to the people of Portland and beyond, freedom to grow, to create, to share, to embrace empathy, to display kindness, and best of all, to love, even our enemies. Not the kind of love that just accepts whatever, but the kind that encourages and guides and uplifts and supports and stands behind someone. We are free from and do not have to serve the master of hate, regardless of race, age, sex, political ideology, or religious beliefs, including lack of them. We are free, but we have to choose to walk in that freedom. Thank you.
Thank you.
We now open the floor to any comments you would have.
Very good. I'll turn this over to my colleagues. Thank you for the excellent presentation. Commissioner Mapp's is first, then Commissioner Gonzalez, then Commissioner Rubio.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I want to thank our panelists for today's presentation, and I also want to express my appreciation to CAN for organizing this year's Juneteenth proclamation. And I want to share this. Colleagues, I am honored and humbled to join you in proclaiming June 19th, 2023 to be Juneteenth. As we have learned today, Juneteenth is a mashup of two words, June and 19th. Juneteenth commemorates June 19th, 1865. Of course, that was the day when Major General Gordon Granger arrived in Galveston, Texas, and read a proclamation, General Order Number Three, which began with these words. "The people of Texas are informed that in accordance with a proclamation from the executive of the United States, all slaves are free." In other words, Juneteenth commemorates the day when black Texans, and my roots go back to Texas, learned that the Civil War was over and all slaves were free. Now, you might notice that there's something odd about the timing of this announcement. Juneteenth commemorates June 19th, 1865, but most Americans think of slavery ending two years earlier, on January 1st, 1863, when Abraham Lincoln issued the Emancipation Proclamation. Now, that 900-day gap between January 1st, 1863, and June 19th, 1865, is a reminder that slavery did not end overnight. Instead, the Emancipation Proclamation of 1863 declared slavery to be illegal in the Confederate states. Of course, as we heard today, the Confederate states at that time were in open rebellion against our federal government. So, the Emancipation Proclamation did not free slaves. Instead, the Emancipation Proclamation clarified the promise and the purpose of the Civil War. With the Emancipation Proclamation, Lincoln made it clear that the point of the Civil War was to end slavery in these United States. However, in the real world, slavery was leaded slowly and unevenly, county by county. And for black Texans, slavery did not end until 900 days after President Lincoln issued the Emancipation Proclamation. That is the day that we've come to know as Juneteenth. Now, Juneteenth has been celebrated in some form in some communities since 1865. Today, Juneteenth is often celebrated with parades and barbecues and by recommitting ourselves to the work of ending race-based exploitation in these United States. Juneteenth is also a day tinged with sorrow. Juneteenth is both a liberation story and the story of justice delayed. Juneteenth is not only an opportunity to celebrate black liberation, it is also a reminder of the work of dismantling racial exploitation that continues to this day. And colleagues, on this Juneteenth, we should also take a moment to remember Clara Peoples. Clara Peoples was a beloved community member and educator, and she is the undisputed mother of Juneteenth here in Oregon. In Oregon, the celebration of Juneteenth began in 1945, when Clara Peoples, a black woman from Oklahoma who worked at the Vanport Shipyards, noticed that her coworkers did not celebrate Juneteenth. So, Ms. Peoples asked her boss if she and her coworkers could celebrate Juneteenth on their break. Years later, in 1972, Ms. Peoples helped organize the city of Portland's first Juneteenth celebration, and Portland has celebrated Juneteenth ever since. For me, it is truly an honor to play a small role in continuing the Juneteenth traditions that Ms. Peoples started here in Portland. That's why I want to take this moment to call on all Portlanders to observe Juneteenth. On this Juneteenth, please take a moment to celebrate black liberation, and please take a moment to renew your commitment to ending racial exploitation in the City of Roses. Thank you very much, and I want to thank the panel again and CAN for helping hold up Juneteenth. And Mr. Mayor, I will now have the floor back to you.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Gonzalez?
Juneteenth is a time to reflect, reflect on our shared American history, on what it means for so many to find out that they were finally free. We should not, and we do not, forget this part of our history. Rather, we should use it to shape our decision-making as a city, as a nation. We celebrate the contributions of African-Americans who transform to this very day, this city, this nation, despite what they have endured. We celebrate the Juneteenth legacy, the legacy of endurance, determination, and perseverance against nearly insurmountable odds. As books about history, particularly African-American history, are being banned across this nation, we must be intentional in our inclusivity to represent the American de Sopora. I would like to thank the city's African-American Network for today's presentation and for the work that you continue to do with and for African-American employees by highlighting their experiences. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Gonzalez. Commissioner Rubio?
Thank you, Mayor, and I want to thank the CAN leaders and members for bringing this proclamation forward once again. And I want to thank you, Taisha and Ira, for your very strong and powerful words. As you said, really eloquently, Juneteenth is a day that we, it's not only a day of reflection, but it's something that's very meaningful to all of us. And it's also a day that we need to actually be thinking of action, and when I say action, I mean meaningful action. We should be asking ourselves in anything that we do here at the city, does this action move us closer or further away from black self-determination and liberation? And it starts with us here at the city. We need to value and see our black employees, their experiences and contributions, and it also means budgeting to those values. It means retaining and promoting according to those values, and also our policies and actions. And not just today, but every day. We should be doing that every day. And we have a chance to recommit to advancing that work that is community-led, to lifting up the importance of being accountable to the past and to support self-determination, liberation, and contributions of black people and communities here at the city and everywhere. So, thank you for this important reminder. Again, we should be thinking about this every day, but again, I really appreciate you lifting this up, as always, in ways that we need to hear and listen.
Thanks, Commissioner. Commissioner Ryan?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Taisha and Ira, and it's good to see you, both Marvin and Jarell, and all of the members of the city's African-American Network who are here in the council chambers and those that are tuning in. That was a really compelling presentation, and it was a blessing to sit here and receive it, so thank you. Taisha, just taking a little bit of what you said, I like, really, it's great that you honored your ancestors in such a profound way, your gratitude for what they experienced. And here's creating a space, as you said, free of oppression, bonding through fellowshipping, I like that word, and supporting black businesses. Economic mobility must always be a key focus. More on that when we address an upcoming item. Ira, this is about love, love that guides, uplifts, and supports, so thank you. Ira, this is about love, love that guides, uplifts, and supports, so thank you. I'm very humbled to vote in favor of this proclamation. How about I?
Thank you, colleagues, for your remarks, and I'd also like to thank today's presenters, all of you, as well as our city's CAN organization and others for your work and advocacy around the Juneteenth celebration, as well as the proclamation that you'll read in just a minute. It's been long overdue that Portland properly commemorates this holiday, and I'm proud of the fact that the city now does take the time each year on this date to celebrate and have this conversation about the proclamation and what it means and the history behind it, and I really appreciated today's presentation giving excellent context, not just to us, but to all those who are watching. I really was impressed with your comments about what would it have been like if you were one of those people held in bondage, and that's what you had known for the entirety of your life, and then to hear for the first time between the signing of the Emancipation Proclamation on January 1st, 1863, and June 19th, 1865, that all slaves are free. That is a sudden and dramatic shift, and I really appreciate, Commissioner Maps, that you mentioned Clara Peoples. And of course, she and Woody Brodnicks worked with our good friend Senator Lee Valgordley to have Juneteenth recognized in Oregon as a state day of observance. And then, of course, in 2021, the Oregon Legislative Assembly finally recognized Juneteenth as a statewide holiday, and we heard today the importance of that holiday. For me, what really resonates is that this speaks to the past and the history, but it is so appropriate for the present and the times that we're currently enduring. This is about overcoming the worst, and it's about exhibiting strength, all kinds of strength that people probably didn't know they had, and it's a generational strength. And perhaps most importantly, it's about resilience. And if people in the 1860s could make that transition and that shift, and the generations since could show that strength and that resilience and overcome the worst, that speaks to the future and what we're capable of. So, I think this is... It's a really good reminder of what the human spirit can both endure and what we can accomplish if we're willing to open our minds and our hearts. So, I really appreciate your being here today and all the folks in CAN. Thank you for the continued good work and service you provide to the city and to the community. I'll now turn it back to you to read the proclamation, and thank you for being here.
Thank you. Thank you for your comments as well.
Yes, thank you.
Should have brought my reading glasses. Whereas, since the inception of the United States, beginning with the first known Europeans to set foot on this land in 1492, peoples of non-Western European descent have had challenges obtaining equal and ethical consideration, respect, and treatment by those of Western European descent. And whereas voluntary and involuntary indentured servitude in the United States began as a method of obtaining cheap labor based on class, social position, or criminal punishment, it soon evolved into involuntary slavery based on race. And whereas, on September 22nd, my birthday, 1862, then-Union President Abraham Lincoln issued and later made effective and signed on January 1st, 1863, the Emancipation Proclamation, which declared the freedom of slaves in Confederate states which rebelled against the Union, tied slavery to the Civil War, and allowed Blacks to fight on behalf of the Union. And whereas, on June 19th, 1865, the news of the Emancipation Proclamation and its impact was presented to the enslaved people of Galveston Bay, Texas, informing them of their freedom.
Whereas, on December 6, 1865, the Thirteenth Amendment to the Constitution of the United States was ratified, thus ending slavery and nonconditional servitude in the United States. And whereas, we honor June 19th, now known as the Poor Man Told Juneteenth, as the day we celebrate and as the day we celebrate the end of slavery in the United States. And whereas, Juneteenth is a holiday for remembrance, honor, and celebration of Black culture, liberation, and achievements made, and encouragement to continue to grow beyond limited expectations and push past any obstacle, real or imagined. And whereas, Juneteenth is an acknowledgement and declaration of freedom from iron chains, freedom from mental and emotional chains, freedom from near-unbreakable invisible chains forged in the scarring fires of generations of physical and mental trauma. And...
Whereas, Juneteenth is a time to reflect on where we've been, where we are, and to create a vision for where we desire to go and do our part in rewriting a narrative that often depicts the Black person as downtrodden, troublesome, threatening, unworthy, undervalued, and less than human. And whereas, as we rewrite our narrative, we take pride in acknowledging our struggle while also grabbing our story by the reins and guiding it in a graceful way to speak our truth of resilience, triumph, value, worth, grace, poise, brilliance, and excellence. And whereas, we as people walk with our heads held high, our shoulders squared, putting one foot in front of the other, knowing that the odds are against us, but yet we refuse to lay down. We will continue to rise up and rise above these suppressive, oppressive, exclusive, and depressive ways of racist... of a racist world that can often be found seeking to destroy the true essence of the Black diaspora. And whereas, we call upon all peoples to join us in celebration as we use this freedom from these slaveries to exercise our minds, to build hearts to love, words to encourage, and hands to heal.
Now therefore, I Ted Wheeler, Mayor of the City of Portland, Oregon, the City of Roses, do hereby proclaim June 19th, 2023, to be Juneteenth in Portland and encourage all peoples to celebrate this freedom, not just on June 19th, but every day. Thank you all. We appreciate you. Thank you.
So, just a heads up here, everyone. We have excellent food prepared down in the atrium provided by Jada's Soul Food Eats. We have local artists, and we also have a city employee who is an author who is here that just released a book to go down and support one of our city-owned employees. Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you. Appreciate it very much. Colleagues, next up is Time Certain, item number 487, an emergency ordinance.
Remove Heritage Tree Designation for Heritage Tree 26 on 4124 North Mississippi Avenue.
Commissioner Ryan.
Yes. First of all, colleagues, due to the extraordinary circumstances of this project, I propose we add an emergency clause to the ordinance.
It already has one, doesn't it?
It was missing a Section 2 emergency clause, so we need to amend it to add that section 2.
I'll second.
Thank you.
Any further discussion on the amendment? Seeing none, please call the roll, Kealan. On the amendment, you can call the roll.
Okay, thank you. Ryan.
Aye.
Gonzalez.
Aye.
Maps.
Aye, and I'd also like to... I need to step out and fill up my glass of water, so I shall return quickly, but aye.
Rubio.
Aye.
Wheeler.
All right. Amendments on the tape.
Okay. So, thank you for that. This item involves the request of homeowner Victoria Burton and her family to delist a heritage tree, number 26. I've had the pleasure of getting to know Ms. Burton, and I think she can best tell her story to the council. Ms. Burton, okay, Parks is here, so the run-of-show is different than what I see here. So, why don't we do this? Why, since you're both up here, we're going to have Ms. Burton go first according to the run-of-show. Is that okay? But since you're up here, why don't we allow that to happen? And it's good to see you, Dr. Long, and take it away. But that's not what I had on here, so sorry.
Sorry. I had to shut my computer down.
It's never as fast as you need it to be, is it?
Thank you for your patience, Ms. Burton. You'll be up soon.
Do we have the slides?
There we go.
Good morning, Mayor.
Morning.
Councilmembers, colleagues, and guests. I'm Adina Long, Director of Portland Parks and Recreation. We're here today to present information for the removal of designation request for Heritage Tree Number 26. Next slide. During our presentation, we will be providing background of Portland's Heritage Tree program, an overview of the process for considering removal of designation requests, background info on Heritage Tree Number 26, including the Urban Forestry Assessment and Recommendations, and the recommendation for removal of designation from the Urban Forestry Commission. Next slide. Heritage trees are the most spectacular and unique trees of our city, chosen for their great size, age, historical, or horticultural value. Heritage tree designations are the result of a lengthy public process, which starts with nominations from members of the public, then reviewed by certified arborists and recommendations from volunteer advisory bodies of the Heritage Tree Commission... Committee, excuse me, and the Urban Forestry Commission. After this process, as directed by Title Code, they are officially designated by City Council. Once designated, heritage trees receive the greatest protection conferred upon any tree in the city, and they are required to be preserved unless dead, dying, or dangerous. We currently have 328 heritage trees in our program. This map... Next slide, sorry. This map shows where they are located. About half are on private property and half on public property along streets or in parks. Heritage trees on private property are only designated with consent of the property owner. City Code states that this consent binds all heirs and successors. Next slide. Per Title 11, Urban Forestry is responsible for overall program management, permitting, and regulation of heritage trees. The Urban Forestry Commission is involved with heritage trees in three distinct ways: recommending new designations to City Council, reviewing requests of tree removal when a tree is considered dead or dying, and recommendations for removals of designation generally tied to tree removal or storm-related failure. Please note that photos that appear in the rest of this presentation are all of Heritage Tree Number 26. This is to provide you with some familiarity with the tree. The final steps in the process are actions by City Council to approve the designation or, when appropriate, remove the designation of heritage tree status to a tree. Today, you are considering a request for removal of designation, which has been recommended by six members of the Urban Forestry Commission. Next slide. Title 11 states that for removal of designation can only occur if the City Council finds the designation, which was based on health, age, history, and growing space, is no longer appropriate. If council agrees with the recommendation, then protections in Title 11 are removed from the tree, and the tree is removed from the Heritage Tree Registry. In this case, if a permit to remove this tree was applied for absent heritage tree protections, it would have to be approved due to its proximity to the house with no opportunity for public hearing. To tell you more about the Heritage Tree Number 26, I'm going to pass it to City Forester and Urban Forestry Division Manager Jen Kira.
Good morning, Commissioners and Community. Can you move to the next slide, please? Going to give you some background on the tree in question today. Heritage Tree Number 26 is an English elm located in the front yard of 4124 North Mississippi Avenue. The tree is five and a half feet in diameter and over 100 feet tall. You can see from the photo here, this tree towers above even the three-story apartment building to its north. The tree was likely planted 130 years ago when the house was built in 1896, thereby placing it among the older elms in our city. It is one of only two trees of the species in the Heritage Tree program and the largest of just four heritage trees in the Boyce neighborhood, a low-canopy area of the city underserved by the urban forest. It was designated in 1994 with written consent of the property owner at that time. At the time of designation, City Code did not require recording of this heritage tree on the property deed. However... Excuse me. However, designation by City Council did bind all heirs and successors to the responsibility for the heritage tree. All heritage trees have a plaque affixed upon their trunks identifying them as heritage trees, and as standard practice, Urban Forestry conducts regular site visits for plaque maintenance and to connect with property owners regarding their role as stewards of these special trees. Next slide, please. The Urban Forestry Division has had numerous and regular contact with the property owners since they purchased the property in 2001. Records show that since the current owner acquired the property, staff had visited this tree and interacted with the property owner on approximately a biannual basis. In support of maintaining this asset, Urban Forestry staff had made at least seven visits to inspect the health of the tree and provide recommendations to the property owners, and has issued at least 11 permits for pruning and other maintenance activities, all at no cost. In addition, as part of the Dutch Elm Disease Monitoring Program, this tree has received regular annual inspections for signs of the disease at no cost. Next slide, please. At the request of the property owner, an Urban Forestry Lead Tree Inspector conducted a health inspection on the tree in February of this year. In their request, the property owner expressed concerns including the presence of elm leaf beetles on the tree and inside the house, possible damage to the front walkway, retaining wall, stairs, and foundation of the house from the tree's roots, and branches hanging over the neighbor's house. The inspector found the tree to be in good condition and provided recommendations to support continued health of the tree, including pruning and removals of the planters located on the root flare of the tree, so near the base of the tree. Additionally, a permit for pruning and chemical pesticide injection was issued at this time at no cost to the property owner. Next slide. To address the concerns of the property owner, the inspector recommended to further investigate whether and to what extent the tree was causing infrastructure damage, as there was no direct evidence of this at that time. The inspector advised and issued a permit for the property owner to hire an arborist to inject insecticide into the tree to address the elm leaf beetle population, a common effective treatment that follows industry-best practices. Next slide. As one of the largest trees in the Boyce neighborhood, one of Portland's low-canopy neighborhoods and adjacent to the freeway, Heritage Tree Number 26 provides important public health and environmental services for the community, such as improving air quality, absorbing greenhouse gases, reducing urban heat island effect, reducing stormwater runoff, improving physical and mental health outcomes, and reducing effects of the climate crisis. As you can see from this screenshot, on a hot summer day, the canopy of this tree provides much-needed shade functioning like an air conditioner to cool this neighborhood. Next slide. At the April meeting of the Urban Forestry Commission, the commission voted 6 to 4 to recommend removal of the designation. Reasoning and considerations for this decision were provided in their May 18th letter to council. They include the lack of recording of the heritage tree on the property deed at the time of purchase, the financial hardship on the family due to the presence of elm leaf beetles preventing the property from being rented to tenants since July of 2022, issues of systemic racism in the city and in this neighborhood, and consideration of the Burtons to the property owner. the property owner's desire to create intergenerational wealth; location of the tree; and finally, support from community leaders for the Burtons expressed at Urban Forestry Commission meetings in March and April. These include leaders from the Oversight Committee of North Northeast Housing Strategies, the Coalition of Communities of Color, the Portland NAACP, and Emmanuel Church. Next slide, please. That concludes our presentation. If there are any questions, we can take those now and then continue in the program.
Yes. Thank you so much, Dr. Long and Jen Cairo. Does anyone have any questions for our leaders from Parks? Okay. Thank you so much for the presentation.
I do have one question.
Oh, do you have a question?
Yeah, so the, as I understand the issue here, and I appreciate Commissioner Ryan having a conversation with him about, so there's an infestation of these beetles, and it's my understanding there has been an effort to try and mitigate that, and it's not been successful. Is that correct?
So the, I think that would be a better question for the Burtons as to timing. There's been a permit issued for treatment, and that was just issued in the past couple months, and funding was identified to cover that cost as well. And so the treatment should be happening at some time. It needs to be timed with the beetles, and I, as my recollection from Ms. Burton is they have engaged an arboricultural company to do that, but I don't know whether it's been done yet. It has not happened in previous seasons.
Okay. And just to be clear, the Commission voted in favor of removing this tree from the registry. Is that correct?
That is correct. They voted in favor of delisting.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Just one quick question. So the prior process was not to record a, anything against the property, no deed restrictions, but we are currently doing so when this, going forward?
That's correct.
Have we done an assessment about the enforceability of the old method? Because of, you know, folks are buying property without proper notice of the restriction. It's, you have some, there's some interesting enforceability questions there.
Yes, Commissioner, we have conferred with the City Attorney's Office, and they have maintained that regardless of whether it was listed on a deed at the time of designation or not, that designation is binding on all heirs and assigns to the property.
Has the matter ever been litigated?
I am not aware of that. Not to my knowledge.
Okay. Thank you.
We'll remain in the room if other additional questions come in.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
This item does involve the request of homeowner Victoria Burton and her family to delist the Heritage Tree Number 6, and I have had the pleasure of getting to know Ms. Burton, and I think she can best tell her story to the Council. Ms. Burton, could you please come forward and tell us why you're here today? And your husband and Tony Jones, who's Ms. Burton's advocate, who has been with her and the family during this process. Welcome, Tony.
Thanks for being here.
The floor is yours. Great to see you.
Good morning, Mayor, Commissioner Ryan, Gonzalez, Maps, and Rubio. My name is Victoria Burton, and my husband Delroy Burton. We are the property owners of 4124 North Mississippi Avenue with Heritage Tree Number 26 on the property. I am a retired Portland Police Bureau Officer, and my husband is semi-retired. Commissioner Ryan, thank you and your staff for reviewing the material and listening to the majority of the Urban Forestry Commissioners, African-American leaders, our neighbors, and us to delist this one tree. I would like to take this time to briefly share the multifaceted financial burden this tree creates for us, which is well beyond what we can afford. Between lost revenue, maintenance expense, we stand to lose approximately $30,000 to $35,000 per year, which is critical to our retirement and retaining ownership of the property. Here are some important facts about our situation related to the tree. In 2001, when we purchased the property, the Heritage Tree was not recorded on title. It was only by happenstance, three years after the purchase, that we were informed by a person who was connected to the Urban Forestry Heritage Tree Program that the tree had protection, and we were financially responsible for the care in perpetuity. Had we have known, been aware of the Heritage Tree, we may not have purchased the property. The tree sits in our front yard, only eight feet from the foundation of our home, right against the walkway, stairs, and retaining wall that protects the sidewalk on North Mississippi. Trees without heritage designation can be removed if they are within 10 feet of a home foundation because of the damage their roots cause. It has been no small expense for us to contend with the tree roots through the years. Despite these challenges, we have done our best to work around the tree. In March of 2022, we took out a rehab loan and invested approximately $40,000 in preparing our property for a small-scale project, food carts and ground lease, which did not require the house nor the tree to be disturbed. However, in May of 2022, we discovered the tree had an out-of-control elm-leaf beetle infestation that is causing significant issues inside our home. On a daily, weekly basis, we find 50 to 100 beetles in the home, and their experiment damages our furnishing and our interior of the home. This makes the home unrentable for long and unpredicted periods, forcing us to use our retirement savings to pay double mortgage, rehab debt, and other related expenses with no sight and end. Urban Forestry inspectors cited it will take several years to interrupt the life cycle of the beetles, the cycle of the beetles. Other professionals cite beetles are using our house similar to a greenhouse, and others cite we will never eradicate the beetles unless the tree is removed. In May of, in May, we also spent $4,500 in repairing the concrete that was severely damaged by the tree roots. Five months later, the root expansion began cracking and lifting the same and other areas. In August of 2022, we called and sent emails to the Forestry Department, which included the Heritage Tree Committee pleading for their assistance, explaining the aforementioned circumstances, including the threat of losing our property. By email, they directed us to find the arborist to treat the tree and pest control company to treat the house. We followed their recommendations. After eight months of paying double mortgage and a rehab loan and other related expenses covering damages from additional root issue, and in spite of ongoing treatment, ongoing treatment, the beetle infestation remained active in our home, we were left with no other recourse but to request Urban Forestry Commission to delist the tree. Additionally, damages caused by the root extensions are roots in our sewer line, crack of our retaining wall, and possibly damage to our foundation causing leaks in the basement. To address the problem, an arborist recommended root pruning at an estimate of 150 to 200 linear foot, as well as the Urban Forester Inspector recommended air spading along with other pruning of the branches. I can provide additional detailed information regarding the multifaceted financial burden this tree is causing, but it would take more time than allotted. We are at the edge of our resources. This situation could have been avoided if the tree was on title those many years ago. Mayor, Commissioner Rubio, Commissioner Gonzalez, Commissioner Maps, we ask you to vote yes with Commissioner Ryan to accept the recommendation of the majority of the Forestry Commissioners and the African-American leaders to delist this one tree. In doing so, it will change our focus from fear of our family losing our property to making our property a benefit to the community and an asset to leave to our grandchildren and our children and our grandchildren. We note and applaud the important work the city has undertaken to correct past injustice in our community. It is just as often assistance from city leaders on less visible, everyday administrative issues brings us closer to economical and social justice. Thank you for your consideration and your time.
Thank you. Commissioner Gonzalez? Very good. Thank you. Do we have public testimony on this item?
We do have public testimony.
Oh, go ahead, Tony.
Yeah. Good morning.
Morning.
Good morning, Mayor Wheeler and City Council. My name is Tony Jones, and I'm the owner of Rubitone Development Services. We are a construction management consulting company. I have been working with the Burtons to plan the construction of food carts on their property at 4124 North Mississippi Avenue. I request that the City Council vote to uphold the UFC recommendation to delist Heritage Tree Number 26. The Burtons, an African-American household, run a great risk of losing their property due to this tree. The Burtons must incur the following annual financial impacts between $30,000 to $35,000 each year. Pay each year over a three-to-five-year period to treat the tree to eliminate the elm-leaf beetles that infest the tree and breed in the home. They incur lost revenue because the dwelling is not habitable. Plus, they must pay for the tree, the damage caused by the roots of the tree, the sidewalk, steps, sewer, and potentially the foundation. The Commissioners voted to delist the tree by a majority of 6 to 4. The Commissioners recognize in this, in this specific case, the Heritage Tree on this property creates an economic hardship that is detrimental to the Burtons. Plus, the Burtons were not notified about this Heritage Tree status when they purchased the property. The majority of Commissioners recognize the Heritage Tree requirements have a disproportionate negative impact on a black household, since they lack the wealth to withstand the negative impact. There are four points that are misleading in the UFC letter, and it's important to point them out to dispel any confusion. One, there was a statement about the healthy tree with elm-leaf beetle infestation for which there is treatment. Several professionals, including the Urban Forestry Inspector, indicated it would take three to five years to eradicate the beetles. The lost revenue must be added to the annual mitigation costs. Insufficient exploration of alternatives, that's also misleading. The dissenting votes do not focus on the beetle infestation. The beetle infestation is the primary challenge, since it takes three to five years to mitigate. Lack of public notice to the community. This item has been on the UFC agenda for three months. The meetings are open to the public, and many people attend the meetings virtually by Zoom. And there's another statement about initial review of the development potential of the property found limited options given the need to protect the tree during the development preserve it. The Burtons never had any intention nor financial resources to maximize the development of the property to its highest and best use per zoning. They only sought to explore the options of food carts to augment their existing dwelling. The majority of the UFC recommends delisting this tree. I ask for City Council to uphold this recommendation. Thank you.
Thank you. Very good. We'll hear a public testimony. Did you say there's one individual?
We actually have 13 people signed up.
13. Two minutes each, please. Name them for the record.
First up, we have Marcus Monday, followed by Bishop C.T. Wells.
Welcome. Good to see you.
I'll just get going.
Thanks, Marcus.
Good morning, Mayor Wheeler, Commissioner Ryan, your department, and all you Commissioners. Thank you. Good to see everybody. Thank you for providing me the opportunity to briefly testify before you today. I don't have much to add to what you've already heard. I'm here in support of the Burton family as they try to have Heritage Tree Number 26 delisted. Theirs has been a long and circuitous journey, circuitous journey, through the sometimes Byzantine bureaucracy of the city of Portland, much of it redundant and likely unnecessary, but which can end today with a vote from the five of you. As I shared in my previous letter to your offices, the issue is simple for me. As much as I love trees, and the earlier presentation notwithstanding from city personnel, I believe that the people of Portland are more important, and that the Burton family's issues concerning the single tree far outweigh keeping it as a heritage tree. In the earlier presentation, it was said that heritage trees have the greatest protection of any tree in Portland. It's my opinion, however, that the needs of the people should supersede the protection of any one tree. So I trust and hope that you vote to remove this lone tree from the over 300 heritage trees currently populating Portland, and thank you for your time and attention.
Thank you, sir. Good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners. Thank you for the privilege to come before you. I'm a pastor and a preacher, but I will speak extemporaneously, but I believe, I hope I can speak to what I believe are the critical issues here. For many of us in our community, this really has to do with the ability to generate multigenerational wealth. I have, where I live, I do have the same problem with beetles in my home. The trees that are abutting my neighborhood, my home, are not near as massive as this tree, but I still have that problem. They treat it every month, and I still have the problem. But what I want to say to you here is, as a lifelong member of this community, we own property on Mississippi, 3951 North Mississippi, was the first church that my father founded, and so I'm familiar with the neighborhood. But what this means for us is the constant attack, and I don't believe it personal, but we take it personal, that the constant attack on the potential for multigenerational wealth. This property has been vacant for some time, and it should have been something that we could have a quick discussion about, talk about it, debate it, and then bring some kind of restitution for the Burtons. But that was not possible. It's been an ongoing, protracted kind of conversation, and it's cost them considerably. So we, as friends of theirs and members of this community, as a pastor in this community, 57-year-old church pastor in there, I'd like to ask not only that the tree be decommissioned, but that the Council find ways to fund the decommissioning and the removal of the tree.
Thank you, sir.
Next up, we have Kimberly Moreland, who is going to join us online. Is Kimberly here? Nope. Okay. Next, we'll go to DeAngelo Moaning.
I am present.
There we go.
Good morning, City Council. I'll be quick. My name is DeAngelo Moaning. I serve as the First Vice President and Chair of Economic Development for the NAACP. I am also a third-generation Portlander with a storied family history in the city, and although the circumstances are unfortunate, I am honored to speak today on behalf of the Burton family. The NAACP is the longest-standing civil rights organization in the country and has fought tirelessly since its inception in 1909 for racial equity in the country and in this city, with the Portland branch playing a major role in the passing of Oregon's Civil Rights Bill in 1953. However, 80 years later, it seems as if we are still, as Black people, fighting for the right to equitable living in the city. In this place where our neighborhoods were raised and places of crumbling infrastructure and economic opportunities were forever lost, and where we acknowledge the history of the tree, yet ignore the history of the neighborhoods surrounding the tree, or the potential to repeat history and destroy another opportunity for Black economic opportunities. I find it ironic that this tree is identified as historically significant while ignoring the reality that this same tree has existed through the destructive destruction of Black albino and is currently responsible for the economic hardship to the Black family through no wrongdoing of the property owners, but by an oversight by the city in its tree-listening policy, the protection of the tree has been prioritized over the family. It's ironic that this tree sits in a strong neighborhood and neighborhood that has strong advocates for Black lives, with signs of support all along the windows and storefronts. And yet, here we are, fighting with those in positions of authority to prove that you do in fact value Black families and economic parity. I absolutely appreciate the advocacy and acknowledgement of Juneteenth and the intentionality behind uplifting and honoring a significant part of Black history in this state that was founded as a white utopia. But the work is yet to be finished, while acknowledgement is the beginning. This is an opportunity for the city to stand on the right side of history, delist this heritage tree, so the Burtons can finally move forward with their goal of developing generational wealth through property ownership and be free of the economic hardship that this tree's tree has caused. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up, we have James Posse.
Mr. Posse, welcome.
Followed by Dr. Stephen Holt.
Good morning.
Morning.
Mayor and Commissioners. I'll be brief. I think you have heard, and the case has been made to support the Burtons. But I want to just speak just briefly to a statistic that was, I have on my phone that was done by Prosper Portland in 2013. It's kind of outdated, but that was pre-COVID. The poverty rate for white Portlanders is around 15% in 2013. 2013, the poverty rate for African-Americans is 35% pre-pandemic. I'm working to get those numbers updated, but I can guarantee you, it's worse now. And this particular incident kind of epitomizes the And this particular incident kind of epitomizes the situation for African-Americans in this community. The gap between what we need as a community to be healthy and economically viable in this community, which also affects all the other demographics about what happens to African-Americans. It was very heartfelt to listen to the Juneteenth statement about the history of African-Americans in this community. And I dare say that the, the legacy of slavery and all that you all talked about early today still pervades the lives of many Africans Americans. I think, I just want to say, the Burton's, the Burton's, by virtue of what they've been through, are experiencing trauma. Our entire community is experiencing trauma. And the, the vote that you all take today would at least lessen the trauma that this family has experienced, and will give a signal to where we go from here. Thank you for your time. I appreciate the opportunity to talk to you about this this morning.
Thanks. It's good to see you.
Next up is Dr. Stephen Holt. Dr. Stephen Holt. Laurel DeGudis online.
Hello. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. I don't think I could say anything more profound or pertinent or powerful than what has already been said, but I would just like to add that as a community member of the neighborhood and frequent, frequent walker of Mississippi Ave and always passing by, I think we all agree it would be a shame to see that, that tree go, but it would be even more of a shame to see the Burton's continue to be unduly burdened by the, the cost and the infestation that's associated with that tree. And yeah, I think everyone's really eloquent. I think that, you know, there's no coincidence that we're talking about, you know, the proclamation of Juneteenth and a very, like, symbolic manifestation of civil rights, but this is definitely an opportunity to materially impact our, our black and African-American community. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate your testimony.
Next up, we have Justin Meisner.
Good morning, commissioners. Good morning, mayor. My name is Justin Meisner. I am a commissioner on the Urban Forestry Commission, but what I'm saying today is solely on my, my behalf and not in any official capacity. Over the last couple of months, I've seen the Burton's go through the process to get here today, and at every turn, there's been a systematic effort to undermine them. I don't have time to go through all the examples, but some examples include repeated attempts to prevent votes from occurring during the commission meetings. The original letter that was drafted for the city was, felt very biased and did not represent the majority opinion of the commission. I would like to state that the writer of the letter did apologize, and I appreciate that. However, when I reached out to Urban Forestry about making changes to the letter, there was a refusal from the forester to make any changes to the letter until after our next meeting, when a majority of the commissioners were pro-changes to the letter. Additionally, there, we, the forestry department did not tell the commission how to properly pick someone to present our opinion to the council, and I believe this was done to try to control the narrative around what was presented to the council today. Mr. Mayor, I've watched many city council meetings where you talk about the importance of upholding the democratic process, but what has happened over the last couple of months has been extremely undemocratic. And then when you take into account that this is happening to the African-American community, and you take into account some of the racist remarks that have been said over the last couple of months, it's very clear that systematic racism is at play here. Lastly, I would like to say that I've lived, I've lived in North Portland my entire life. My, my family's lived here since the 70s. The tree is a good-looking tree, but no one has paid any attention to this tree that has any substantial connection to the neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate your service, and thank you for being here today.
Next up, we have James Glaspe.
Welcome.
I live directly behind this, this tree on the next street over, and I've got to say that my wife and I will greatly miss this tree if it sounds like it's coming down. It seems to me like the mistake that's made here is you're not giving any assistance to the homeowner for something that you're insisting that he be responsible for. So, I know there's not any way to do this, but if there was a way to provide him with a financial assistance from the city to, to do the things that need to be done and save this tree, because we will definitely miss this tree in the neighborhood. And that's all I have to say.
Thank you. Appreciate your testimony. Thanks for being here.
Next up, we have Leslie Ortiz Angeles online.
Hello, everyone. I am speaking in support of removing the heritage tree designation from the tree on 4124 North Mississippi Avenue. I've witnessed the many public meetings discussing this tree, and I'm heartbroken and appalled that the Burton family has been put through such a distressing process in order to save their home and property. Throughout the whole process, I couldn't help but think how different this would be if a developer were dealing with this issue. It's easy. They would just pay the fine after the tree has been cut down, and that would be the end of it. Instead, we have a family being interrogated regarding the validity of their claims and given dismissive responses along the way. Beetle problem? Don't worry. After several costly treatments of upwards of $20,000 a year, the beetles will be gone in three years' time, at the very least. Will the city help pay? Nope. Still can't afford it? Keep asking around. Even after confirmation that delisting this specific tree will not set a precedent for any future cases, there is still fear-mongering commentary regarding the future of the heritage tree program, when instead, that energy should be directed towards the reality that this is coming down to choosing a beetle-infested tree and a family's home. Voting to delist is a vote to save the Burton family's property. Voting to delist is a vote to prevent yet another black family from being displaced from the neighborhood. If you do not vote to delist, you are choosing to punish the family for not being able to afford to save their home and property by any means necessary, and I implore you to move forward with delisting this tree. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up, we have Karen Torres online.
Hi, good morning.
Morning.
My name is Karen Torres, and I'm resident of northeast Portland, and I wanted to highlight a few points in order to urge you to support delisting Heritage Tree 26. As you've heard, at the time the Burton's purchased this property, the heritage tree was not listed in their deed. The cost to treat the beetle infestation has been quoted to be approximately $20,000 per year for at least three years. I'd feel comfortable guessing that the average Portland family could not afford to do this, and it seems unreasonable to expect a semi-retired family to do so. The Burton's have already tried many avenues, including asking for financial assistance from community organizations, and unfortunately, no one has been able to come close to covering a reasonable amount, once again proving that the Burton's have gone above and beyond to find a different path forward. Lastly, the opposition around this center is the Heritage Tree 26, but in doing so, we are forgetting what this means for the Burton's and for the legacy of the city of Portland at large. The reality is the Burton's are not wealthy landlords trying to take advantage of the community. They are a couple trying to use the resources they have worked incredibly hard for to continue living in an increasingly expensive city. Without delisting the tree, the Burton's will likely be forced to sell their home. Refusing to delist the tree will contribute to the Burton's losing their opportunity to build intergenerational wealth when so little opportunity already exists. It is incredibly disheartening to hear people trying to use public conservation to alienate other community members, and so I hope to choose, that you choose to uplift community members and support delisting Heritage Tree 26.
Thank you.
Next up, we have Bridget Crane Simka.
I'm Charles Simka, Bridget Crane Johnson, and I look forward to you voting unanimously to end this saga for the Burton's and to apologize to all your constituents for your embarrassing shitshow. There's really, you know, there's some important testimony that got added to the record about the struggles of this family to have this process move more expeditiously and to consider the cost. But also, we're working with a record that has made no mention of DV Katz Enterprise LLC, nor the property on 82nd at 140 Southeast 81st Avenue. But that's not really relevant because of the crap we're putting this family through right on the heels of the June 19th declaration. At one time early in your career, Ted, you had the city cut a $3.1 million check to the slumlord that maintained bedbugs and roaches at 333 Northwest across from, Northwest Sixth or Fifth. This property, since its purchase for $120,000, the property in question, which houses this tree, since its purchase for $120,000, has supposedly, according to the GIS information, which we'll talk about the GIS contract later, appreciated to about half a million dollars. It's not that far south of the Red House, where we had another real estate drama in the city. But when these things come to the council, there's a fiduciary duty, so it's weird that some of the facts I've put on the record weren't there, but the more important facts have come from the community testimony that talks about the subtle ways racism works and the slow grinding process that the owners of this house and have faced. So, I look forward to proving this. However, it's weird that we couldn't come up with other options that helped this family build intergenerational wealth and perhaps share the tree maybe a short, I don't know if the city's ever done leasing for housing, but I think the best situation is to respect the hard work that this family has put into trying to do the right thing here and just release this tree from the inventory and let them get on with their generational wealth building. Thank you.
That complains testimony.
Very good. Colleagues, any further question or discussion? Very good. I will just say, I appreciate Commissioner Ryan updating me on this situation. This is not one I've followed closely. This is out of my portfolio, but I do appreciate the testimony we heard today, and I'll comment more on that in a moment. But I wanted to thank you, Dan, in particular, for taking the time earlier this week to update me and give me the, the lowdown on this. There being no further comments or questions, please call the roll. This is an emergency ordinance as amended.
Ryan.
Yes. First, I want to thank everyone who came to testify today. It was great testimony. And to Victoria and Delroy Burton, thank you. And to your advocate and friend, Tony Jones, thank you for your patience navigating through this lengthy, multi-step, and expensive process. I know there will be people who are going to be upset by this decision. I want to reassure you that promoting racial equity and valuing fairness does not diminish the importance of urban shade, canopy, and other conservation efforts. That said, it is only fair to allow this family the chance to accumulate multigenerational wealth, a process that is benign to black Americans for too long. This is a complex issue. On this specific case, this is an easy decision. Let's put the previous Juneteenth proclamation into action. I vote aye.
Gonzalez.
I just want to thank the Burton's for your patience and diligence in following the difficult avenue to get this tree delisted. I know that has been a long time coming, so thank you for being here with us today to clear the final hurdle. Commissioner Ryan has made some great points. This issue touches on several sensitive topics in the city, in our community, but ultimately today, the city can finally right a wrong from 22 years ago, when the status of that tree was not disclosed during the purchase of this home. Today, I'm in favor of delisting Heritage Tree Number 26. I wish the Burton's success with their future plans for the home, and thank you for their patience while navigating this process. I vote aye.
Mappes.
I want to thank everyone who testified today. I vote aye.
Rubio.
I want to acknowledge the challenges and efforts that the Burton family has had to go through in getting to this day. Just as an aside, when I was a kid, our family had to deal with some tree beetles as well. It was a nightmare where we lived, and it wasn't even to the level that you all described. So, I'm appreciating what you're saying. That being said, delisting this tree is the right choice for all the reasons that we heard, and again, just one, to the family, I want to say very sorry for the distress and the financial impacts, and also the city roadblocks you had to deal with. So, for these reasons, I vote aye.
Wheeler.
Yeah, I, I want to echo the sentiment of my colleagues. Today, hearing the testimony is really the first chance I have had to hear the various perspectives. I just want to say, I was also very interested in what the gentleman said, I think he, there, who actually sits on the commission. It speaks to potential dysfunctionality of the commission, and I may have misunderstood, but I hope that, that that issue gets addressed if there is something going on there. All of our commissions deserve to be well-staffed, well-supported. The people who serve on those commissions deserve to feel that their voice is being heard and respected, even if there are differences of opinion on said commission, so that, that probably is something worth noting and taking a look at. Of course, we, we have the director of the Parks Bureau here with us this morning, so I'm sure she is taking notes as well on this. I was very compelled by the economic statements you made. You're correct. There's no average family that can afford to incur the costs that you have been asked to incur. It's not reasonable. It is not a reasonable burden for, for what's being asked. And I, I really only had one question coming in today, which is, could the situation be remediated? And what the public record has made quite clear is only over a period of many years at a substantial cost. And so, yes, there are trade-offs here. There are undoubtedly some people who will miss this tree, you know, just based on the photograph. Obviously, it's a, a big and extraordinary tree, but there are trade-offs. And for me, the trade-off in this case really is a question of the time, the money, and the expenditure going into remediating that tree versus protecting a family that I think deserves our support and our encouragement. So, I'm very happy to vote aye for this, and I'm sorry about the longstanding drama that you and your family have been subjected to. I'm also impressed with, with the leaders in this room who came forward to support this petition. This, this is really a, an impressive group of people who came forward as a community to support a family and express an opinion, and I'm deeply compelled by it. So, thanks for being here. I appreciate it. I vote aye, and the ordinance is adopted. Thank you. And we've all been at it for a couple hours. Why don't we take a break so we can refill our water glasses and whatnot? Why don't we take a 10-minute recess? We will reconvene at 11:45, quarter till. Thank you. We're in recess.[1702.88]
All right, we're back in session. We'll now move to the regular agenda item number 497, please, an emergency ordinance.
Amend human resources administrative rules for compliance with Washington state law and equity updates.
Colleagues, the Bureau of Human Resources is responsible for facilitating the revisions of its administrative rules, which are direct policies and procedures representing personnel-related rules for our employees. Today, BHR has put forward a number of updates that I am happy to support. The city's workforce demographics are reflective of a growing trend across workplaces nationwide. The proportion of individuals who self-identify as something other than straight or cisgender in the workplace is growing with each and every year. The recent Portland workforce census showed that amongst respondents, nearly seventeen percent of the city workforce self-identified with a sexual orientation other than straight, heterosexual, and approximately three-point-six percent self-identified with a gender identity other than man or woman. The policy amendments to Hrar are six-point-zero-four A and B and six-point-one-zero-A. City sick and safe leave respectively introduced by this ordinance show responsive allyship to the large and growing LGBTQIA-plus portion of the city workforce so that all city employees can see themselves and their diverse families in our leave policies. Lastly, policy amendments to Hrar are two-point-zero-one and six-point-one-zero-A bring our policies into conformity with Washington law, reflecting our ongoing hybrid work environment for many employees. I'll turn this over to Bureau of Human Resources Deputy Director Tracy Warren to take us through the details of this ordinance. Welcome, Tracy. Thank you.
Good morning, Mayor and Commissioners. The administrative rules before you today provide much-needed changes to support our diverse workforce and meet compliance with Washington state laws. I'd like to thank Senior Deputy Attorney Anne Milligan, who's sitting beside me today, for her help to revise these rules. We're here today to answer some questions and provide a few more details. I'm going to turn it over to Anne to provide a little bit more information about the specifics around the rules.
Thank you, Tracy. Historically, family definitions in law and policy have often failed to meet the needs of families in the United States, and they frequently fall short today. People have a broad array of loved ones who are central to their notions of family and caregiving, who are outside of narrow definitions of family. In particular, LGBTQIA-S plus individuals and families continue to experience the collateral consequences of narrow family definitions in local, state, and federal policy, and would gain significantly from more inclusive definitions of family in workplace leave policies. Even today, LGBTQIA-S plus people too often face extreme stigma within their biological families and communities. In the face of this non-acceptance or outright rejection, many of these individuals forge close relationships with friends and informal networks, often known as chosen families. The close affinity language proposed in these amendments, which are finalizing prior interim amendments to six-point-zero-four-B and six-ten-A, honors the diverse reality of our families and comes with significant legal precedent. During the Vietnam War, federal regulations were amended to allow federal employees to take funeral leave for the combat-related death of immediate relatives, including anyone that they were related to by, quote, "blood or affinity whose close association with the employee was the equivalent of a family relationship." Similar language is also included in the Oregon Paid Family Medical Leave Act, which has been amended this year, and Paid Leave Oregon, which of course is going live in September. And with that, we would open it up to any questions that you might have.
Very good. Colleagues, any questions at this point? Do we have public testimony on this item?
No one signed up.
Any further discussion? This is an emergency ordinance. Please call the roll.
Ryan.
First of all, thank you. Great presentations. Good to see both of you. I wholeheartedly support this ordinance. Everyone deserves to live free of discrimination, and this ordinance will help ensure that we are able to do so, and that includes me and my gender-fluid spouse. I always am in favor of closing the gap between two codes that ensure greater efficiency, and in this case, compassion. I vote aye.
Gonzalez.
I vote aye.
Maps.
Thank you to staff and, I think, the mayor's office for bringing this item forward. Really glad to support this. I vote aye.
Rubio.
I'm really glad to support these changes, and who you choose as your family matters, and we support all of our employees and chosen families. I vote aye.
Wheeler.
Aye. The ordinance is adopted. Thank you. Appreciate your being here. Next up, 498, an emergency ordinance.
Authorize letter of agreement granting recognition to mental health crisis responder one and two peer support specialist and community health worker classifications into a represented status under professional and technical employees, Local 17, and address wages and working conditions as part of the collective bargaining agreement.
Colleagues, this emergency ordinance recognizes four classifications as being represented by PROTEC 17. Mental health crisis responder one, mental health crisis responder two, peer support specialist, and community health worker. Bureau of Human Resources Labor Relations Coordinator Anne Marie Kevorkian-Mattie and Emergency Operations Division Chief Ryan Gillespie from the Portland Fire and Rescue are here to walk us through the ordinance. I hope. Are they online?
Clear here. Online.
There you are. Welcome.
Yeah. Good morning, Mayor. Good morning, Commissioners. We're here to present an ordinance that you just identified to incorporate the mental health responder, crisis responders, the peer support specialists, and the community health workers into the existing PROTEC 17 collective bargaining agreement. Just some background, we voluntarily recognized these members in November of 2022 and have been working with them towards understanding where we can reach agreement on the wages and working conditions of these employees. Presently, there are forty-one incumbents in these classifications, five of which, excuse me, are housed in the Portland Police Bureau's Behavioral Health Unit. Some of the highlights of this letter of agreement, this will move all of the employees in the classification from a grade to a step, and that will be retroactive to March first of 2023. This will provide the five-percent COLA effective July 1, 2023, in alignment with all other PROTEC 17 members. It also provides some premium pay for field training officer work and professional certifications that are germane to their classifications, and establishes that effective as of July 1, 2023, the employees within the Portland Street Response Unit will be required to work on city-paid holidays. There are some associated costs with this agreement. In fiscal year 2324, there's an estimated $411,000, which covers approximately $175,000 of wage adjustments. Some presumptive costs associated with premium pays of $236,000, we don't anticipate that that would be the full amount that would be, the bureaus would be responsible to pay. We've costed that conservatively. And then $83,000 of retroactive wage and premium payments for the period of fiscal year 2223. Again, that dates between March 1st and June 30th. The fiscal year 2425 estimate is approximately $77,000 above the fiscal year 2324. The PROTEC, pardon me, the PROTEC 17 contract expires June 30th, 2025, and so, at that point, we would engage in successor negotiations. I am happy to take any questions that you all may have, along with Chief Gillespie.
Very good. Colleagues, any questions? I do have one. Is fire budgeted to absorb the costs of this LOA?
Morning, Mayor Wheeler, Commissioners. I'm Ryan Gillespie, Division Chief, Portland Fire and Rescue. This is not currently in our budget, but the costs will need to be absorbed by the Fire Bureau budget. And Anne Marie, I don't know if you want to expand on it, but it was not accounted for in the labor set-asides for next year's budget.
Yeah, that is correct. Chief Gillespie, when we had discussions with the city budget office, this wasn't an anticipated compensation set aside, and so, they've asked the bureau to assume the costing and absorb, and there may be a need potentially to come back and request additional funding through ordinance if need be. We also understand that there are a small percentage of the costing will be associated with the Portland Police Bureau, since they have five incumbents in classification there.
Okay, so the majority of this then will be absorbed by the Portland Fire and Rescue, then? Is that correct?
That is correct. Yes, Mayor.
All right. Thank you very much. Commissioner Maps.
Mr. Mayor, can I just ask a clarify, or staff, let me ask a clarifying question, building on the question the mayor's asked. So, in which budget cycle would you need to request more money? Is that, are we talking about the fall bump? Are we talking about next year's budget process?
It would be my estimation that it would likely be the fall bump.
Thank you very much.
Very good. Thank you. Do we have public testimony on this item?
We have one person signed up.
Very good.
Rachel Whiteside.
Rachel, three minutes, please. Name for the record.
Good, almost afternoon. Rachel Whiteside, I'm Union Representative for PROTEC 17 members at the city of Portland. Thank you for the opportunity to provide some testimony today. I essentially just intended to be here in case there were any questions regarding this item, since I am the designated representative of the union, but of course, I can't help myself. I prepared just a few comments. First off, I just wanted to start out saying how honored I am to support the workers of this much-needed and popular community service. What I personally have witnessed in my short time as their union representative is that this group clearly and authentically cares very deeply for their work and for the people that they serve. I believe it was the PSU two-year evaluation report that stated this care extends beyond their individual client interactions. They are also deeply committed to the broader community and to transforming the way that first-response systems engage with people experiencing mental health crisis and homelessness. My personal take on it is that our members quite literally represent the heart of the city every day out in our community, and I don't think you need to take my word for this. Our members have reached out to me and said that anybody who hasn't had an opportunity to do a ride-along with PSR, please reach out, and let's get something scheduled.
Very good.
That same PSR, I'm sorry, that same PSU report also concluded that Portland Street Response continues to demonstrate success in meeting their outcome goals of reducing police and fire response to non-emergency calls and calls involving people experiencing mental health and behavioral health crises, and as part of that, they made several recommendations for program growth and improvement. I believe that this letter of agreement helps address some of those suggestions, specifically having a union contract in place provides structure and consistency that helps add more predictably, sorry, more predictability to these very stressful jobs, and the preset wage tables that are consistent with all city-union contracts will lend transparency to applicants seeking employment with the city and support recruitment and retention needs. And then just finally, the very good conversations that we had at the bargaining table between PROTEC members and the PSR management team, I think, laid a strong foundation for a collaborative labor-management relationship and the additional work that we need to do around things like training and scheduling in order to support workers and the community. We have a good foundation for that. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have, and I encourage your yes vote. Thank you.
All right. Thanks, Rachel. Appreciate it. Colleagues, any further questions? Seeing none, please call the roll.
Ryan.
Aye.
Gonzalez.
I think this is an important step in supporting Portland Street Response. I look forward to collaborating with our team members to build a thriving first-responder network. I vote aye.
Maps.
I'm glad to vote yes on this, and I am going to vote yes on this. I also, for the record, and for the record and for my colleagues, I feel obliged to mention my concern about the fiscal implications of this contract. We haven't budgeted for this. We are, I think at this point, systematically spending a fall bump. We don't know if the fall bump will even exist. I think we're on kind of dangerous territory in terms of fiscal responsibility in this space. In the meantime, I vote aye.
Rubio.
I want to thank the bargaining team and the folks representing the employees at PROTEC 17 and Mayor Wheeler for bringing this item to council. Thanks to everybody for the work that you do day in and day out. I vote aye.
Wheeler.
I vote aye. The ordinance is adopted. Thank you. 499, please.
Authorize the acquisition of the Morrison-Bridghead property located between Southwest Nato Parkway and Southwest First Avenue for $8 million to be used for park purposes.
This is an emergency ordinance. Commissioner Ryan.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. This property is a once-in-a-generation opportunity.
Turn my mic on. This property is a once-in-a-generation opportunity to add large, open area to waterfront park. With the acquisition of the Morrison-Bridghead, large trucks and equipment won't take up as much valuable waterfront park lawn space during downtown events. This acquisition also provides us with expanded space on the waterfront to host new and more events and activities. This property and related costs will be paid for with the Park's CDSDC System Development Charges Funds. I'd like to introduce Dylan Paul, Park's Property Manager, who is here to give us a brief presentation and answer any questions. Dylan, it's good to see you. The floor is yours.
Thank you, Commissioner, Mayor, members of the city council commissioners. My name is Dylan Paul, Property and Business Development Manager of Portland Parks and Recreation. It is a pleasure to be here today representing the Morrison-Bridghead block acquisition in its addition to Waterfront Park. The eastern Bridghead blocks are directly across from the most active event areas in Waterfront Park and centered between the Burnside Bridge and the Hawthorne Bridge, making it an ideal property for incorporation into the city's current waterfront park holdings for the purposes of increased event capacity and visitor parking. As you probably know already, Parks and Recreation, with the support of our Commissioner, has turned a strong focus to downtown events and activations in alignment with many other internal and external partnerships. Current downtown park properties host or support over 450 annual events and issue over 6,000 recreational permits each year citywide. With this property acquisition and several other efforts, we are looking to bring that number much higher in the coming years. Historically, Waterfront Park releases an annual request for interest for events in the month, for the months of April through September. Waterfront Park has a limited event season due to the inability to reggerminate grass during the cold winter months. This new hardscape site represents the opportunity for the city to host year-round events at Waterfront Park. The new winter activations at the site could include markets, fairs, tented events, and more, when the grass at Waterfront Park is not suitable for the more intensive uses being requested. Next slide. Nope, that's the right one. Activations related to public markets and fairs and year-round events have been the dominant theme for this site for the better part of the last decade. While Parks and Recreation does not have any current redevelopment plans, like what the current owners, Bridghead LLC, and their architects, Sarah Architects, have allowed us to share with you on this slide, any future changes would go through a thoughtful and equitable public outreach and planning process that Parks and Recreation is widely known for already. Because this site is already a 300-stall parking, surface parking lot, in its current condition, it can already support winter events, relocation of heavy equipment and vehicles out of Waterfront Park during the summer months, and function as a paid parking lot when not being used as an event space. Next slide. Morrison-Bridghead blocks, specifically blocks 1, 2, and 39, as outlined in this photo, have a gross land area of approximately 142,000 square feet, or roughly 3.26 acres, and are comprised of a mix of right-of-way and private tax lots. Well, Nomad County assessed tax value is approximately 8.6 million, and the city's purchase price today is 8 million. The source of funds for this acquisition is, as our Commissioner mentioned, Park's System Development Charge Program Funds. These are one-time fees assessed on new development, and they help ensure that Portland's quality of life keeps pace with our growing and changing needs by providing additional Parks and Recreation facilities to accommodate that new growth. Next slide. This site has several incumbents, but none of them prevent Parks and Recreation from being able to use the site as is for parking and events and activations. Specifically, there's a shared-use agreement with Multnomah County for the surface area under the bridge deck, ramps, and air rights, and BES has some sewer easements that could easily, could potentially impact future redevelopment of the property. However, as I've said before, we have no current plans to redevelop this property and intend to use it as is. You can see in this photo here, the outline of the on-ramps and bridge decks there are where that shared-use agreement is located, and in gold are the two sewer easements that cross that property. We don't see any of that as being a barrier for our intended use. And with that, I'll conclude my presentation. I'm here for any questions you may have.
Very good. Colleagues, any questions? I lost my screen.
I have one.
Commissioner Maps.
Why is this an emergency ordinance?
Yeah, so historically, when the city does property negotiations and purchase, time is of the essence. Oftentimes, we're putting in competitive offers and have several, you know, time restrictions. So typically, we don't like to wait when trying to close escrow. It makes us less competitive when trying to seek new properties to add to our portfolio.
Okay. Can you remind me who we're buying this from again?
The owners are listed as Morrison-Bridghead LLC.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Is there any public testimony on this?
No one signed up.
Very good. Please call the roll.
Ryan.
Thank you for your presentation, Dylan. I'm really enthusiastic about the addition to Park's portfolio, and more importantly, to Portlanders who love their parks in this space. This investment symbolizes my commitment to increased activations and events in Portland's downtown area and of the good things like livability and economic engagement that come with that. Let's keep pumping life into the heart of Portland. I vote aye.
Gonzalez.
I vote aye.
Maps.
Aye.
Rubio.
Aye.
Wheeler.
Aye. The ordinance is adopted. Thank you for the presentation. Next, item 500, also an emergency ordinance.
Authorize the Bureau of Transportation to acquire certain permanent and temporary rights necessary for construction of the Cully Neighborhood Street Improvement Project through the exercise of the city's eminent domain authority.
Colleagues, our 500th item since the beginning of the year. Commissioner Maps.
Only feels like 499. Colleagues, this item comes to us from PBOT. This ordinance authorizes PBOT to acquire certain permanent and temporary rights necessary for construction of the Cully Neighborhood Street Improvement Project. The Cully Neighborhood Street Improvement Project will improve local streets in the Cully Neighborhood by paving gravel streets, adding sidewalks, building stormwater infrastructure, and slowing traffic with speed bumps and stop signs. This ordinance enables the street improvement project by authorizing eminent domain authority and the ability to offer just compensation for the needed property rights. All affected property owners have been contacted by phone and/or email about the city's need for the property rights and have been invited to attend the reading that we are having here today. Here today to tell us more about this project, we have Ashley McLeay, PBOT Right-of-Way Manager, and David Backes, PBOT Project Manager. And I'll turn it over to staff now. Welcome.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Good afternoon, Mayor Commissioners. My name, for the record, is Ashley McLeay with PBOT Right-of-Way Acquisition. I'm here to present Agenda Item 500, which gives PBOT authority to compensate property owners for easements needed for the Cully Neighborhood Street Improvement Project. I'm joined by my colleague, David, who will provide a brief overview of the project. Next slide, please.
Hi, David Backes, PBOT Capital Project Manager. I consider this slide kind of a sneak preview of our project here. I'll be back in two weeks with our authority to bid ordinance. We'll go into a little bit more detail, but the Cully Neighborhood Street Improvement Project is part of a larger project with all three infrastructure bureaus called the Cully Public Works Improvement Project. We're improving about three miles of streets in the Cully Neighborhoods. We're talking about streets that have been gravel forever, streets without sidewalks, streets that are suffering from nuisance flooding and that kind of thing. Today, we're focusing mostly on one little segment, kind of in the top right of that map. Most of our temporary construction easements are related to Northeast 73rd, where there's a couple segments of sidewalk today, and what we're really doing is connecting the dots, so there's continuous sidewalk all along the street, and this will allow us to get in there and construct those improvements. We're getting close to wrapping up design, and we're expecting construction to begin about a year from now, maybe a little less.
Next slide, please. So, in order to construct this project, we need temporary construction easements from 18 properties. These temporary easements are needed for construction report, support, excuse me, like driver reconnections to the new sidewalk facilities. All affected property owners have been informed via mail or email, and they've been invited to this reading. And that concludes our presentation. We're happy to take any questions.
Commissioner Ryan.
Thank you. You said 18 neighbors have been, you're connecting with 18 people?
Yes.
Okay. And have they responded, or?
Yeah, I've received several responses. I'm just asking more about the project. We'll be mailing out offers after.
So, three out of the 18 have responded?
I'm sorry?
Three of the 18?
Three of the 18 have responded to me directly.
Okay. I think because there was an emergency on this, I just wanted to make sure the community engagement process was very robust.
Yes.
So, if we make a decision today, it moves forward, but 15 people haven't really been, haven't talked, haven't communicated with you?
David has been doing.
I'm just confused a little bit.
Communication through over the years, too.
Oh, yeah. So, there's the general public involvement segment that I've been working on for about the last two years, and then there's the right-of-way specific piece. So, I've been out with our engineering team, you know, on our high-vis gear, PBOT kind of stuff. So, people have seen us walking around. We've had face-to-face conversations with a number of the neighbors who've come out and talked with us, and we've done, you know, mailers and postcards, and we have a map online that has over 15,000 views of the project extent. So, just because the neighbors haven't directly responded to the right-of-way piece yet doesn't necessarily mean that we haven't spoken with them, or they haven't seen our materials at this, at this time.
Very good. Commissioner Maps.
Two things. Number one, David, I apologize for butchering your last.
No problem.
I won't make that mistake again. And two, I should have asked this before we got here. The title of this says that PBOT is seeking some permanent and temporary rights to access property, but when I went through. And looked at the documentation, I didn't see anything about permanent, permanently using any spaces. Is this, is there any permanent use here, or is this all just temporary?
For this product, it's just temporary rights needed.
Okay. So, we're just seeking permission to access? Can you give us an example, the kind of spaces that we're looking at accessing? Like, are we talking about taking over blocks, or feet, or?
Just the fee feet to connect driveways back to the new sidewalk facilities.
Okay.
So, I think our biggest one's a couple hundred square feet.
Okay. Great. Thank you very much. I have no more questions.
Very good. Any public testimony on this item?
No one signed up.
All right. This is an emergency ordinance. Please call the roll.
Ryan.
Aye.
Gonzalez.
Aye.
Maps.
Aye.
Rubio.
Aye.
Wheeler.
Aye. The ordinance is adopted. Thank you for your presentation. Next, item 501.
Add utility operators code to govern utility access and use of the city right-of-way and adopt fee schedules for utilities operating in the city right-of-way.
Commissioner Rubio.
Mayor, I'd like to request this item be referred back to my office.
Without objection. Commissioner Gonzalez.
Commissioner Rubio, do you anticipate we'll have another opportunity to revisit this code this year?
Yeah, so there were no less than 10 amendments floating around over the city hall for the last few days, one of which would have created a significant hold on our general fund to the. the tune of multiple millions of dollars, as well as potential legal implications. And so I was concerned that there wasn't sufficient or any legal or financial analysis done, enough time for the city attorneys and staff on what was being circulated. So out of an abundance of caution and, quite frankly, protection for the general fund until we do that analysis, I had no choice to pull it back to my office. So we're going to be under discussion, and we'll be back in touch at a later date.
Okay. And just for the record, I appreciate the complexity of this topic, the necessity to attract investment in things like 5G and digital equity. I get the concept of what we were trying to do with the code. I share with you the concerns about some of the financial impacts of the proposed amendment. So I just, I hope this doesn't just disappear into a closet, and I hope we have the opportunity to reengage again at the right time.
Thanks for your comments.
I'll echo that. I appreciated it coming to council last week. I appreciated the Q and A. I put my questions out for everybody to respond to. I really didn't hear much response to my specific questions, but I also understand and appreciate why you're pulling this back to your office. And I want to, again, thank you and your staff for their hard work on this, and I'll look forward to seeing it when it comes back.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Next item, please, 502. This is the second reading.
Amend small donor elections program code to consolidate primary and general elections to align with the voter-approved charter amendments in Portland Measure 26-228.
Colleagues, this is a second reading of.
Point of order, Mr. Mayor.
Commissioner Maps.
Is this the second reading or first reading?
Second.
Second reading.
I pulled it off. I pulled it off consent last week.
I, I, thank you very much. The, um, the agenda is a little bit confusing.
So this is a second reading of a non-emergency ordinance. We have already heard a presentation and had opportunity for public testimony. Is there any further business on this item?
Yes, Mayor.
Commissioner Rubio.
Sorry. I have submitted an amendment for consideration, and the purpose of the amendment is to direct the program leadership and the Portland Elections Commission to improve the program's penalty and appeals process. And my understanding is that the hearings office, which is now housed in the Office of Management and Finance, could be a new home for this process, but research is needed on this. So I ask that this work be done and that Director Motet report back to council on these findings, and if additional council action is needed.
I am happy to second, if you're looking for a second. Very good. So Commissioner Rubio has moved. There's a second. Is there discussion on the amendment? Could you further elaborate on, I'm not necessarily opposed, I just don't quite understand what the amendment is. Could you further elaborate, please?
So I'm going to call up Julian and Maya, or one of you.
Thanks, Julian. If you could just give me sort of the 101, I'd appreciate it.
Yep. For the record, Julian Shoney with Commissioner Rubio's office. So when this program came to be, small donor elections, Director Motet in particular worked very hard to find a process by which the complaint process penalties could be facilitated. And at that time, the hearings office was located in the auditor's office, the previous auditor. She said no, so the program was left to sort of handle all of this on its own. There was one complaint filed last year that was sort of their first run at it, and it was not perfectly smooth, I think for either side of the equation. But as Commissioner Rubio said, the hearings office is now in OMF. OMF is open to being the solution. We just don't know if it fits the needs. And so Director Motet needs to look at that, explore it, explore it, look at some of the legal advice the city was given during last year's complaint process, and figure out the way forward.
Okay. And this certainly reminds me, and so there is not a specific strategy being proposed in this ordinance?
Right. No.
It is simply a statement that we need a strategy that then comes back to council for further discussion and approval.
Yes.
Is that fair?
That is fair. And we may need code changes, we may not need code changes. It might be something that the program can handle in administrative rules, but all of that is unknown and TBD.
Okay. Very good. So Commissioner Maps, did you have further commentary?
I apologize. No, I do not have questions, though, of this morning.
Okay. Very good. So point of order, then we will vote on the amendment, then I'd move it to third reading. Is that correct?
That's fine.
Yeah, that's correct. And we just wanted to clarify for Commissioner Rubio that the amendment is the amendment that's posted on the auditor's.
Yes.
Or on the web page now. Okay. And so, yeah, it would, vote on it if the amendment passes, it would have to move to a third reading next week.
Very good. And I assume there's no public testimony on the amendment?
No.
Call the roll.
Ryan.
Thank you. I will support the amendment, but I want to make some comments on why I originally pulled this out of consent, and why I'm glad we're having more dialogue about it. The small donor program, first of all, is vital part of our local elections. It allows grassroots participation, promotes civic engagement, has transparency and accountability. In fact, I think that when I look across at my colleagues, I participated both in the open and accountable election twice, and then the modified small donor program, three times. No one else can say that up here. So I have lived experience, and I really, really am a big supporter of it. This amendment pushes what was once an emergency item then to consent, from consent to a third reading. I really want this to succeed. I appreciate the work that's been done in updating the code, but I'm, and I'm glad I pulled it for further conversation, because my concerns are budget and service-related. It takes very simple arithmetic to understand this is not a sustainable model for financing city candidates. This morning, I asked direct questions, the following, answers for the following questions. With nine additional races, are we resourced to steward this program? The answer was no. We need additional $500,000 in the fall bump and $4 million ongoing in the 2024-25 budget to be well-resourced. We have had recent conversations about the fall bump, and this should be a concern for all of us. The second question I asked, and I assume we must also increase staffing to meet what could be at least three times the need, is that in the plan? And the answer was no. So no matter how noble the intent, this program will not help anyone if it runs out of money, and I'm 100% again supportive of this program. I just know that there's more work that needs to be done as we align to the new way we elect officials under our new charter. So there's some unintended consequences and new expenses we must address as the voters approve the charter change. I hope we have more clarity on how the program will be adequately resourced by next week. Again, I vote aye on the amendment.
Gonzalez.
I think for all of our benefit, I just want to acknowledge there's a potential conflict for any of us that would be considering running under this program, so I just want to put that on the record. I'm not sure there is a conflict, but there's at least a potential conflict. Notwithstanding that, I'm comfortable supporting this. I appreciate Commissioner Rubio's office's focus on a difficult question, where do you handle appeals? And given the prior history where they really couldn't find a home, they were turned down a couple of places, times, in the program's history. Hopefully, we can come back with a plan for December 1 that works for everyone. I vote aye.
Maps.
Can I, let's clarify what we're voting on. Are we voting on the amendment now, or are we voting on the ordinance?
You're 100%.
Okay. Great. Thank you. I just wanted to clarify that, especially for folks watching at home. I'm going to vote yes on this, and I also want to echo and underscore everything that my colleagues have said so far. There is, I have questions, too, about conflict of interest issues as we vote on a program that Frank, that I've participated in in the past. I'm not sure how to resolve that, but I think it's worth at least voicing that tension. And I also want to revisit an issue that Commissioner Ryan raised, which are the fiscal implications of this. Obviously, this is an important program, and we need to fund it. In my reviewing of the documentation on this, I understand that this program will need to come back to council in the fall for funds and the fall bump. I'll remind our colleagues that I think two items ago, we just spoke with, we just passed an ordinance that allowed basically PSR to unionize under Pro-Tech, and learned that that wasn't budgeted for, so we're going to have to go back to the, so in order to pay for that, we're going to have to rely on the fall bump. I think we have also heard from the City Economist even this week, who has raised questions about how many dollars will actually be in the fall bump. I have, I worry about our ability to follow through on our financial obligations here, and I feel like we're getting out a little bit above our skis. But in the meantime, I'm certainly happy to vote yes on this amendment.
Rubio.
I just want to appreciate the conversations with Commissioner Gonzalez on this, and happy to vote yes on this amendment.
Wheeler.
Happy to support the amendment. It makes good sense. Thanks, Commissioner Rubio. I vote aye. The amendment is adopted. This is then going to move to third reading as amended. And now we have, what, a four-fifth item? If I can find the right page. 502-1, please.
Amend fee schedule for tree permits.
All right. Commissioner Ryan.
This is 490?
This is 502-1, a four-fifths agenda item.
Sorry.
Fee schedule. Fee schedule for trees.
I don't have anything on that.
I bet these guys do.
You guys do.
It's your show. Go for it.
Yeah, sure. Yeah, good morning. Thank you, Mayor Commissioners. My name is Brian Lando. I'm with Urban Forestry, and this item today is the Title 11 Trees Fee Schedule Update for the 2024 fiscal year. This was pulled from a prior council agenda item, but it's back on today. So I'm going to provide just a few brief comments, and then turn over to Claudio, our finance, property, and technology manager. Title 11 fees help provide essential tree services to the Portland community by covering part of the cost of the urban forestry performing its regulatory responsibilities as directed by Title 11 and the Urban Forest Management Plan. Broadly speaking, urban forestry issues two types of permits, development permits and non-development permits. Development fees cover the cost of urban forestry providing early assistance plan review, tree preservation, planting, and other services associated with development activity. At present, we estimate that development cost recovery for urban forestry is at about 84%, 84%. Non-development fees include your standard tree, tree removal permit, or a street tree planting permit, and those fees are kept low or offered at no cost to both encourage compliance and minimize costs as a barrier. Parks Urban Forestry also offers fee waivers for qualifying low-income applicants. Claudio Campisano, Parks's finance, property, and technology manager, will talk through the proposed fee schedule for the next fiscal year, and that draft fee schedule was presented to the Urban Forestry Commission and the Development Review Advisory Committee in April, and no concerns were raised at that time.
Great. Thank you, Brian. Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. I'm Claudio Campisano, finance, property, and technology manager for Portland Parks and Recreation. The Title 11 Trees Fee Schedule for 23-24 fiscal year incorporates a 5% increase to development fees that would result in an estimated $90,000 in additional revenue for the program. This increase was included in the Parks and Recreation requested budget to cover anticipated increases in personnel, facilities, and other expenditures. It did not contemplate the recent collective bargaining agreement with Layuna Local 483. Portland City Labor has implemented compensation increases which exceed that 5%, so that'll reduce the overall cost recovery of the program below that 84% that Brian just mentioned. Exhibit A with the ordinance includes a marked-up version of the proposed fee schedule update. The 5% increase adds between $10 and $50 on development permits. In almost all cases, less than 1/10 of 1% of total development permit fees and other development charges. So to put that into perspective, in a typical multifamily development, the updated schedule would increase Title 11 fees by $29 or .002% of the total fees and charges assessed by the city. This is the, so this is the same fee schedule that was presented at this council work session last month on user rates and fees, and happy to answer any questions.
Could I ask a question at the beginning, and I appreciate the way you broke this down. This is very helpful for me. You had differentiated between development fees and non-development fees, so planting a street tree or removing a tree. Is it, my understanding, is my understanding correct that the increase you are proposing is on the development fees side of the equation?
That's correct. The non-development fees do not include any increases.
Great. I'm glad to hear that, first of all. And second of all, then, these fees are used to recover the costs of actual development work. So in other words, if you are charging me, you are charging me because I am also seeking the development service from the city of Portland. Is that correct?
That's correct. A regulatory program, as Brian mentioned, is currently at around 84% cost recovery. That'll go down slightly, even with these fees, just because of some of the labor negotiation.
Okay. And where does the remainder of the cost?
That's supported by the general fund.
So, you know, we've had a lot of really interesting conversations around fees and rates and whatnot. And one of the areas that has been of interest to me is I really don't have a whole lot of heartache of increasing the cost of programs that are specific to specific individuals who choose to use a service and then pay for that service. And so my question here is why is this not fully funded? Why, if somebody is asking for a development permit, is there something in the cost here that I'm missing? What am I missing?
Well, we've been actually moving more towards full cost recovery. Historically, the program has been even lower than 84% cost recovery. So over the last several years, we've been, we've been moving towards it, but I think that trying to make that leap all in one go would have been, would have been challenging.
And you said it's $10 to $50. $10 to $50 compared to what?
So 5% increase, a typical, typical development permit is going to be about $300, $500, I think?
Yeah. On some of this, like a standard permit for a commercial construction would go from $584 to $613.
Okay. So, you know, every dollar counts, of course, but it's fairly de minimis in the overall cost. How did you land on this particular increase?
It was based off of the COLA increase that was provided by the city budget office. So we were really working in step with those COLA increases. So it's similar to the increase that BES.
That's helpful. That gives, that just gives me the context. Thanks for answering my questions. Anybody else have any questions on this item? Do you have public testimony?
No one signed up.
All right. This is a four-fifths item. This is a first reading. Correct. So this is a first reading of a non-emergency ordinance. It moves to second reading. Thank you, gentlemen, for your explanation. One more item. We have to go back to the consent agenda, if I can find the right.
Thank you, Brian and Claudio. Sorry, I couldn't find my notes.
Can I, on this, can I?
He said everything much better than me.
Commissioner Maps.
So we're doing a fee schedule here. It's coming back for a second reading. The fee schedule, do we have enough time to implement this? What happens, maybe this is a question for staff. When would the new fee schedule come into place? I'm getting the impression, yeah, when would the new fee schedule come into place or be in effect?
Yeah, the, all of the development fees are intended to go into effect on the same date, on July 1st. So my understanding is that it would need to be an emergency ordinance if it were to, in order to be effective by then.
So when we come back for a second reading, you're going to have, I'm trying to understand the render show. Maybe the attorney looks like she knows what's going on here.
Well, I don't know what's going on, but I can tell you what you could do, I guess, is some options. So it won't, if it's passed next week as a non-emergency ordinance, it will not go
will not go into effect until 30 days after, which will not be July 1. It will be July 20th or whatever that is. And I guess one option, especially since you've, we've already kind of moved past it, would be to, next week, one of you could move to amend to add an emergency clause and vote if there are enough people to vote on emergency ordinances next week. I just wanted to check that before--
Maybe I, yeah. I think I might be the person who is out next week and I may be zooming in, may not. Could we make it an emergency ordinance today?
We haven't done anything. So, so I think someone could move to amend to add an emergency clause now. Vote on the amendment.
All right. Sounds like Commissioner Maps has made an amendment.
If it's, I offer this friendly amendment to Commissioner Ryan, if it makes, well, number one, let's pause here. Staff, do you have anything to say? Do you understand what I think the problem is?
No, I understand. So just to clarify for everybody and for the public, my understanding is that if we were to pass it on non-emergency even next week, it would take 30 days to take effect--
Yeah.
Which would be after July 1. And so it wouldn't be in sync with all the other fees. And that would be sort of an administrative burden as we sort of try and, and also a confusing message to send to developers as we, as we shift into July 1. So, so moving it to emergency, my understanding it would require unanimity today. So, yeah.
So is that a motion? I'll second it.
So moved if you, if you receive it as a friendly amendment.
Second.
Commissioner Maps moves. Commissioner Ryan seconds. Any further--
May I ask Commissioner Maps to just specify why he is--
In order to make sure that the new rate schedule is in effect at the beginning of the fiscal year, I move to make this an emergency ordinance.
Good. Any further--
Do you want me to second that? I second that.
No, that's just a description. Any further discussion on the amendment? Seeing none, please call the roll.
Ryan?
Aye.
Gonzalez?
Aye.
Maps?
Aye.
Rubio?
Aye.
Wheeler?
Aye.
The amendment is adopted. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please call the roll on the motion as amended. Ryan?
Aye.
Gonzalez?
Aye.
Maps?
Aye.
Rubio?
Aye.
Wheeler?
Aye. The ordinance is adopted, is amended. Back to the consent item. Hold item number 490, please.
Amend contract with Environmental Systems Research Institute Incorporated for geographic information system software to increase by $3,500,000 for a not to exceed total of
Colleagues, Environmental Systems Research Institute Incorporated, or ESRI, has been the primary software vendor for geospatial products across the city since 2000. Over 10 bureaus and dozens of work groups use GIS-related software and applications as part of their daily work and operations. I'll turn this over to Information Systems Manager Diego Portillo to take us through the details of the ordinance. But let me ask, who pulled it first?
Bridge Crane.
Why don't you testify first? And then if there's specific questions that you raise, then we can use Diego's time more effectively. Thank you.
Excellent. Yeah, I agree.
Appreciate it. Thanks.
Good morning, Commissioners. Eric, good afternoon. By 39 minutes. You know, we've just had this little previous item discussion about what's an emergency or not. And Mrs. and Mr. Dangermond are going to be fine. They're the probably billionaires that control ESRI. They ditched the long name a while ago, or maybe it's a subsidiary. ESRI is the parent company. But let me just tell you that even though the city is currently helmed by the former state treasurer, y'all don't look good on this, on the consent agenda. You're talking about almost 50% increase in a contract and we have to rush it through before the 1st of July. It's especially unsettling when the city is helmed by the guy who was over purse. And so I, and I do, we're going to need some clarity. Is this like an absolute increase in the amount of money going out to ESRI? They control probably over 50% of the global market. They get gobs of money from the feds. I like their product. We know that some people can have their address information for their home in which they have $30,000 in property tax removed in the Portland MAP system. This is running Portland MAPs. That's the public-facing side of this. As the mayor mentioned, also provides critical services to a number of bureaus. I think that since we're here on, we've had some specific references to June 19 and Juneteenth celebrations. When we hand out $3 million or $7 million to a person that manipulates the market, we want to also make sure that those people are holding up the same values as the city as far as DEI and social justice. ESRI seems to be doing a good job. I believe they still have Clinton Johnson working there on social justice. But when you're handing out $3 million in a last-minute dash, out $3.5 million, and it's mingled in on the consent agenda with some items at only $6,120, it increases, I think you all would agree that there's a public sentiment and growing frustration about the ability to do what needs to be done in Portland. And I just really wanted that to be on the record. I would hope that a short presentation will talk about how, when we started paying these people in 1999 and we only paid them, is the amount in there? Anyway, so it really is unsettling to see that something's capped at a little over $7 million. But right now, we have an emergency where we need to expend 50% of that money, especially when, as other commissioners have raised the issue, we don't know how solid the budget is and what's upcoming in the bump. So thank you for whatever brief explanation we can get about the amounts.
Thank you. And just a reminder, these are not to exceed numbers that could also include significant expansions of the service of the city. But Diego, why don't you come up and respond to some of what Bridge Crane had suggested?
Good afternoon. Diego Portillo, Corporate GIS Manager, Mayor Commissioners. The $3.5 million is actually to note to exceed the contract and that will be for the, to cover the software for the next four to five years. So--
I'm sorry?
That, that amount is to cover a future ELA, an enterprise license agreement with ESRI for the next four to five years.
Thank you.
The savings that, the savings that we have, we have saved with the new ELA, it's in the millions of dollars since we started the, since we standardized with GIS, with ESRI and acquiring an ELA, we save up to, up to approximately $30 million. So the, we, the emergency is to make sure that we can continue using the software and we can continue engaging in all, in the savings that we're able to save the city and our citizens.
So if I'm understanding you correctly, by signing a multi-year contract, you're actually reducing the cost?
Yes, we're reducing the cost by about 75%.
That sounds like a very smart thing for a fiduciary to do. Thank you. Anything else to add? Any other public testimony on this item?
No one.
Please call the roll.
Ryan?
Aye.
Gonzalez?
Aye.
Maps?
Thanks to staff for the presentation. Actually, thanks to Bridge Crane for highlighting this issue. I wouldn't have frankly paid a whole lot of attention to it if it hadn't been pulled off of consent. I'll tell you, as the guy in charge of PBOT, Environmental Services and Water, this is software we use a lot and is incredibly helpful. I'd love to see this capability expand throughout the city. As a former academic, I used to use this software quite a bit myself too. And I know it's expensive and I know the contracts are a little, can be kind of tricky to negotiate depending on, I assume the city has a better experience than like a lone academic does. I think it's one of, this is one of the more important tools that's available to our analysts and practitioners out there. I vote aye.
Rubio?
Aye.
Wheeler?
Always happy to have opportunities to save money by locking into a product that works very well for the city of Portland. I vote aye. The ordinance is adopted. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Commissioners.
And we're adjourned. Let's go eat lunch before we come back.